That's what you say, good morning.
Good morning.
There you go. You're on, Nikki, if Eric's good to go.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Chair Bone. I'll start with you.
I'm here.
Well, good morning. Supervisor Madron?
Present.
Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Good morning.
Good morning, and Supervisor Royo is out.
Please salute our flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I love that. Hey, you.
Good morning, Chair.
Welcome.
There are no modifications to the agenda today.
Imagine that. Anybody have anything on the consent calendar they want to? I'll open it well. Here it is. Get up here. I'm pretty sure this is the last time we can tell you what to do, right? After that, I just get a salute.
Where?
Yeah.
Where? Okay.
You've been around a while.
Mm-hmm.
Started when you were 14, I see.
Yeah, sure.
Go with that. This is a resolution from the Board of Supervisors. They're always bittersweet because we hate to lose great employees. Whereas Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, eligibility supervisor, Casey Cordero, is retiring after more than 24 years with the department. Whereas Casey was hired as an eligibility worker in 2000, promoted to eligibility worker two a few months later, then integrated case worker and eligibility worker three in 2004, becoming an eligibility supervisor in charge of training incoming eligibility staff for social services. And whereas during her tenure, Casey has trained and supervised more than 400 incoming and new specialists. How many of you guys did she train in?
[laughter]
Are you sad she's going or are you happy she's going? No, no.
They're happy.
Whereas one staff person said, "Casey has made a point to not only teach the work but to help others navigate county employment and spent many years being a welcoming face for new social services staff, helping them acclimateize," Jesus, what's with all the words, "to county life and remembering and checking in with them over the years." Whereas another staff person said, "Casey was my supervisor many years ago and she's still an inspiration to me to succeed, to do better, enjoy my work while I do so. Now that I am a supervisor myself, I recognize the incredible development of staff that she has given the agency over the years." Whereas Casey has shared that the highlights of her time at DHHS include watching people grow and promote within the county, the friendships she has made during the years with the department and meeting her husband, Steve, who she's been married to for almost 16 years before he passed away in 2022. Whereas one thing many staff have said stands out about Carrie is her kindness. One staff person expanded, saying, "She is one of the kindest people I have ever met. She radiates kindness and I feel blessed to have worked alongside her. She is part of my work family and she will be missed." Now therefore, it would be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize honors and expresses our gratitude for Casey Cordero's years of service to the department and her contributions to onboarding hundreds of new social service staff and wishes her the best as she starts her next chapter filled with travel and a new life in Seattle. Get an umbrella.
I have one.
There you go.
Got one.
[applause]
I'm good.
Good.
Thank you. Thanks.
And thank you for everything.
Absolutely.
Well, put that one.
Come up over here. Come up here.
Come on, crew, get up here.
Yeah. All of you. One. You're covering my face, I'm short.
Well, you should get your hair too. And Connie, yeah.
Renee's dropping in here, too.
What happened to Aunt Slavens?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Want to say anything?
Oh. I'll cry. Yeah.
Will you stay here for a second?
Yes, I will stay here.
I wonder. Where's Eric?
Eric? God.
You have to wait for me.
Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director, thank you for this resolution. Casey deserves all of the happiness in the world, retiring from the county and moving on to whatever happens in Seattle. I'll have to keep an eye on that. She not only is training unit supervisor means a lot of things. Training unit supervisor means that you interview those 400 people and do background checks and choose them and train them and support them and then support them throughout their career in Health and Human Services. So I just want to thank you, Casey, for your time with us and appreciate all the work. I see your daughters here today, too, so good to see that, all in the family here. So thank you so much for your work. Absolutely. Thank you.
[applause]
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I want to appreciate you guys for acknowledging Casey Cordero and all her years of service and I want to appreciate Casey for the great work that she has done for our county. I'm program manager with DHHS and I'm currently Casey's boss, although I would say I've learned more from her than she has learned from me, for sure, over the years. One of the amazing things Casey does is she stays connected with the staff throughout their careers and she builds these long-term, longstanding relationships. And what a better representative for our county and to bring people in the county government and to really promote them through the tracks of eligibility into social services and other careers here with DHHS. And I'm just super proud of the work she's done and we're really, we're losing something super valuable here and I wish her the best of luck and I know she's going to live a happy, happy life after this. I know you will and we're all going to miss her very much. Thank you, Board of Supervisors.
Anyone else? Any stories? Good stuff. Thank you.
I bet you guys got a lot of work done because you don't talk too much. I'll bring it back to the board.
I just want to say, like, when we have these retirements, that it is really amazing when, especially when people are called out for their training and inspiration for generations of folks within this community and within a community of helpers and menders and people who inspire, really appreciate that. And it just shows that it's, you know, that that influence is exponential. It just grows outward and I just want to thank you for that work. And so even though we're sad, you know, someone like this we're losing, I'm really grateful for all the folks within the institution that have grown and seen a path that's positive. Thank you.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes, thank you for all your hard work and for being such a great part of a wonderful team of people. So appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I just want to say congratulations and good luck on the move. I didn't have the pleasure of working with you, being so, I'm not the newest on the board, but one of the newer ones. Obviously, your fellow workmates really admire you and it sounds like you trained most of them, so thank you for your contribution to our organization and good luck in your future.
Casey, have fun up in Seattle. You've earned it and I'd like to say I'm sad, but I'm really happy that you're getting out here and can be able to enjoy your life as it should be because after you guys put in your service, the whole idea is getting out of here in time to go enjoy your life and what you've done has provided that. So, and with your coworkers, you know, I don't expect anybody to say anything bad, but the thing is, they all said so many positive things that I could tell by the smiles and the laughs that they were genuine, they weren't canned. So thank you for everything. Very much appreciated. Wait, yeah, I know you're behind the pillar. You're a pillar of community and you're hiding behind one. Thanks, Kay. Appreciate it very much. All right, we're going to move on now. I think we're going to have Renee up. Are you coming up for this one? North Coast Stand Down. I think I've been to every one of them.
I think so, too.
And I think I have some of the T-shirts to prove it, but. This Humboldt County Board of Supervisors Resolution in honor of the North Coast Stand Down. Whereas on September 26th, 27th, and 28th this year, the North Coast Stand Down will take place at the Humboldt County Fairgrounds. And whereas the purpose of Stand Down is to reach out and provide a hand up to local veterans and their families. Whereas the term "stand down" is a military one that is used in war times when exhausted combat soldiers requiring time to rest and recover were told to "stand down" and were taken from the battlefields to a place of relative security and safety. Whereas today, Stand Downs are held across the country as grassroots, community-based events designed to help veterans obtain information and access to medical, employment, social services, legal, and other types of assistance. Whereas approximately one-third of America's adult homeless population have served their county in the armed services. And whereas the North Coast Stand Down is committed to providing access to additional short-term and long-term resources, including shelter for the weekend, opportunities to begin drug and alcohol recovery. Whereas like the North Coast Stand Down, the most effective programs for veterans are community-based, nonprofit, veterans helping veterans groups. And whereas the 2024 Stand Down will make a positive difference in the lives of local veterans and their families and raise community awareness of the needs of soldiers returning from active duty. Now therefore, it would be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and commends the 2024 North Coast Stand Down Committee volunteers for their efforts to address the needs of veterans on the North Coast and encourage all North Coast veterans in need of services to attend the Stand Down.
Well, I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors for their time and their acknowledgement for the Stand Down. I would encourage everybody, please consider coming out, bringing media with you. Let's bring attention to all the hard work that's being done to change veterans' lives. It's a very busy weekend for veterans this weekend also. If you can spare time, Humboldt Honoring Heroes will be on Friday and the Veterans Car Show is on Saturday. So I know I'm asking a lot of you, but please consider your population and come out and join us in celebration and help us through this. I'm not the board member for the Stand Down. I'm the Veterans Service Office with the Department of Health and Human Services. And again, I just wanted to take the time to say thank you for your continued support. It means a lot to the world. Thank you.
And, you know, I know a lot of groups, Sons of Italy comes out and cooks it down. A lot of groups come out. I don't want to pinpoint anybody. But I think last year, when I left on Saturday, they had done 188 haircuts. Think about it, haircuts, people that hadn't had one for a while, some of them. But you have to understand with Stand Down, it's not only for a veteran that may be down on his luck or anything else. It's for anybody that's a veteran to come out because they may not be getting a service that they realize that's available to them. And I saw that last year with a couple guys that are retired law enforcement veterans, but there were services that were available to them that they had no idea that were available to them, that were cost savings and benefits for them. So it's a, they must have, my hat's off to our DHHS and our whole crew over there because I think they have five tables for everything. We have our van out there. Open Door Clinic has their van. There's a dental van. There's three dental vans. I mean, it's pretty amazing what they do. And as we sit here and, you know, thank everybody for what they're doing for our communities and everything else, we don't get to do anything without a veteran. So anytime we can help, honor, or, you know, appreciate what they've done, it's a good thing to do. So Renee, as always, thank you for everything you do outside the box.
Thank you and to encourage all the widows to come, too. It's just a tremendous opportunity for everybody to learn more that they didn't know, gain the healthcare, the dental, the clothing, get the boots to be ready for the winter for the homeless. It's just a big opportunity, so I'd encourage everybody to come and please bring media with you. Let's bring attention to them. And it is an honor to have done this for almost, well, with the program for 20 years, but every year of the Stand Down has been, with the exception of COVID, has almost been 20 years in itself. So we thank you guys.
And with that, if you go to, if you have the accessibility or find the accessibility, if you have for a veteran or a widow that has trouble with transportation, there is transportation available throughout the county and it's on the website. And I printed it out and left it sitting on my desk.
I left some at the back there as well as the bus company will take you out for free.
Yeah.
But if there's specific sites, if you need a shuttle, they'll let, on the shuttles, they'll let you take your animal with you out there, too, because animals can get serviced, too.
Yes.
So that's pretty impressive. So thank you, guys.
Thank you again.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll bring it back to the consent calendar and open it up to public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board? Oh. Seeing one?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen on the board, ladies and gentlemen of Humboldt County. My name is Vernon Price. I'm here to say thank you on item number I-1, the resolution for the support of Prop 35. Thank you so much for, you know, maintaining and bringing quality healthcare here.
So that's on the consent, Vernon, but you can come up and speak on that item when it comes available.
My apologies.
No, you're fine. You're golden. Okay. I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Nikki?
Thank you. Chair Bone, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry, my computer's not coming up, going down. It is. Yeah. Public comment on non-agenda items?
I have some documents. Take these to Nikki, I assume. Ken Sobotsky, I believe, last August 20th, you declared August to be a Child Support Awareness Month, but I consider it to be a 30-day process, not just for that. So I attached that to this. I have some documents here that I think you should really read and take to heart. There's a serious problem here in Humboldt County. I'll explain a little bit of the documents you have here. The first page, you have a picture of a whole bunch of people back in the day and you have your main person here who was at that time was Philip Crandall. The last person pictured in that is manager Mooney Higginson. The next document you have here is a response from Sheriff Billy, who I feel has great karma and you'll see what a kind-hearted he is, doing everything he can to take care of children here in Humboldt County. That was a document, I believe, generated on January 7th, 2024. Your next two pages, you have an email submitted to me, January 6th, 2024, which was not a secret document. This is totally an email to me, never was in the court process. I wish you to read that particular document and understand it. This is why I'm here. This is why I'll be back here. My grandson, very smart young man, very young in life, autistic, had two sayings, happening and not happening. The taking away on any permanent basis of these children from their mother is not happening. In my opinion, the happening is somebody needs to go to jail for what's happened. There's clearly a cover-up. Everything the county's had has used to cover it up and I think if you read what I have here, put two and two together, you'll see exactly why. The next pages are a person who was accused during the first cast interview, I believe, of perpetrating child abuse, molestation, trafficking on these children. This kind of shows the character of that person. I think you'll find that kind of interesting. The cast interview that happened in Humboldt County was conducted by, what I've been informed, was a neighbor and long-term friend of that particular family, lives within a block or so of where they live. Then we go on to the next part of what happened here and everything seems to have gone south. I played very nice with everybody and then as soon as everything went south, to protect this person, in my opinion. Somebody is protecting somebody who is a pedophile and belongs in jail and has engaged in sex trafficking. So the happening part is the mother will go back to the children, will not be taken from children, not happening. The happening part is somebody's going to go to jail here. They're complicit to this and I think it's a top person you'll find in that particular department. They have the opportunity to speak.
Are you? This is public comment on non-agenda items?
It's a little rough to follow. Good morning. My name's Charles Garth.
Yeah. Charles, are you speaking on your property?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm pointing out that our longtime local attorney, beloved Ed Denson, has passed for a few months now and he's having his memorial on Saturday. And I think it'll probably be a good celebration and everybody should show up. And he, one of the last things he really worked on was getting that tiny village thing going, which you guys, you know, used and wound up, you know, building on and passing. And I want to thank you for it. And hopefully it will be, you know, well-used in this community. We have positive solutions to, you know, homelessness or what we need. And that's what I'm saying. Hi.
Okay. Seeing no one else? We'll move on to a resolution of support for Proposition 35. I brought this forward. RCRC has come out in favor of this and I have yet to see a headline saying, "Healthcare in rural California is good." And then you find something that the Democratic Party and the Republican Party both agree on. And I'm sitting here going, so it's either bad or good. I don't know which way to look at this, but everything I've read, it's kind of takes the money that we're already getting now and it makes sure it can't be used. I mean, in the last 15 years, $30 billion has been redirected from healthcare by our state government. And as a small rural county, I can tell you what the effects are of redirecting money from where it was supposed to go. So that's why I brought this forward and would love a, what do you guys call it, spirited or robust conversation on it? If there is one.
Well, thank you for bringing this forward. I've spoken with Matt Reese, who, Garberville Hospital, Gerald Phelps Hospital is a community hospital and had, I signed a letter for him in support of this that he sent in and I'm very supportive of this item as well. Healthcare in almost everywhere, not just rural Humboldt County, is difficult and difficult to get appointments, sometimes months and months out. And I think that this could benefit, would benefit greatly, the community hospitals that we have with the reimbursements. So I am very supportive of this item.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you bringing it forward as well. And yeah, it seems like a no-brainer as far as supporting this kind of thing. I note that Assembly candidate Chris Rogers met with Healthcare for All, I believe it was yesterday or the day before, here in the county, and I appreciate his efforts to start reaching out and get a handle on what is a very complicated issue. But this is a piece of that puzzle, helping with funding for important things in our community, so fully support it. And after public comment, look forward to moving this forward.
Support this effort for Prop 35. I mean, yes, I think it's important that we not redirect healthcare funds and put them where they are, but also not redirect healthcare funds to private health insurance companies. I mean, it's just, that is the biggest waste in our healthcare system today is an unnecessary and function of private healthcare insurance. We need a system that diverts all of that money to healthcare and not to the profits of those large corporations that don't really have our interests in mind.
All right. Open this up to public comment. Seeing, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Vernon.
I'm moving a little slower in my old age, so thank you.
Well, just keep moving.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to say, I can only say I would love to elevate everything that's said. And thank you so much for adopting this resolution to support Prop 35. Thank you.
Yeah. Seeing no one else, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign the letter and send it off.
Second.
Second? Move Dan second and Nikki?
Thank you, Chair Bone. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Chair Bone?
Sure.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Okay. With that, I'm looking for my clerk for the mic mic.
Your clerk is asking if we can skip this one because some of the applicants were prepared to be here later.
Whatever you say, boss.
Sorry, but I had let the applicants know that it would probably be a little later in the morning. I don't see any of them online at the moment. If we could just move to a different item, I think that would be better for everyone.
We have one in person.
So, Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Madron?
One of those classic situations where you've got something pulling at both ends, right? And I appreciate the position that puts you in. With the time set at 10 o'clock, if we don't do it now, then it'll be later and there are other, and there are people that are actually here in the audience that want to speak to this that may not be able to be here later.
I'm not.
So I'm just, you know, whatever's the preference of the chair and the board.
Yeah, and we've had this situation before and I imagine, if you'd see the grief the clerk gets when she tells somebody to be here at 9:30 and it doesn't happen until 11 o'clock and people say so. So I think she contacted people, I think she told them it would be after the closed session.
I actually told them I thought it would be after the 10 o'clock time set, so that is on me.
Not closed session, but time set.
I told them I couldn't predict it. It's the board's discretion.
You're golden. We'll move on to planning and building. Status of the code enforcement proceedings at 473 Quarry Road in Trinidad? I'll make it a half.
Chair, in a bit of transparency here, I didn't think there was any way you would get to this before the to be here later.
Whatever you say, boss.
Sorry, but I had let the applicants know that it would probably be a little later in the morning. I don't see any of them online at the moment. If we could just move to a different item, I think that would be better for everyone.
We have one in person.
So, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Madron.
One of those classic situations where you've got something pulling at both ends, right? And I appreciate the position that puts you in. With the time set at 10 o'clock, if we don't do it now, then it'll be later, and there are people that are actually here in the audience that want to speak to this that may not be able to be here later.
I'm not.
So I'm just, you know, whatever's the preference of the chair and the board.
Yeah, and we've had this situation before, and I imagine, if you'd see the grief the clerk gets when she tells somebody to be here at 9:30 and it doesn't happen until 11 o'clock, and people say so. So I think she contacted people, I think she told them it would be after the closed session.
I actually told them I thought it would be after the 10 o'clock time set, so that is on me. I told them I couldn't predict it. It's the board's discretion.
You're golden. We'll move on to planning and building. Status of the code enforcement proceedings at 473 Quarry Road in Trinidad. I'll make it a half.
Chair, in a bit of transparency here, I didn't think there was any way you would get to this before the 10 o'clock time set. And so the staff is not here to do it. I'll go ahead with it, but I am not the primary staff.
Reading everything, and I don't know what the, what? If it includes doing it right now, that'd be great. What is it?
Yeah, and just, one suggestion would be is like, we could, we could take comment, I guess we can't, from applicants that are here, and then postpone that item until after the 10 o'clock, so at least they get their say, and they can have on, go on with the rest of their day. Just an idea. Or we could move on to the legislative.
That one's timed set.
Okay. I don't know, my suggestion maybe isn't working out so great, so sorry about that.
Well, I don't think it's, if I may, it's not fair to Director Ford's staff. They've worked hard to present, and I think they should be here. And he does too.
We could probably, Chair, if I may, we could probably go into closed session. We might just be a little bit later on the 10 o'clock.
Let's get close. That's what I was thinking, is just go straight to closed session right now. We've got 25 minutes, and can you, and then we'll go into, and you can make sure you have staff here by 10:30. They're crystal ball? Okay. All right. We'll see you guys in 25 minutes.
We're going to do public comment.
Public comment on closed session?
We've got to read it in.
I need to read them in.
I know you do. And you want to read it in? I don't have any public comment.
Thank you. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6 in order to review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Cannon Reyes Biona versus U.S. Forest Service et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2401588, and City of Arcata versus A.O. Kariki Ben Tutt Malik Silkis et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2401719.
I'll ask again for public comment on closed session.
Two of these litigation items seem to be linked to other municipalities or other cities. I guess they just throw your guy's name in there just to see, because you might be a pocket, so it's always interesting to see that happen. They have the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. County Council, you want to report out?
Good way to get him there.
Thank you, Chair Bone. There was no reportable action taken with regard to Item K1. With regard to Items K2 and K3, the board voted four zero with Supervisor Arroyo absent to authorize the Humboldt County Council's office to defend the county of Humboldt in the cases of Cannon Reyes Biona versus U.S. Forest Service et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2401588, and the City of Arcata versus A.O. Kariki Ben Tutt Malik Silkis et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2401719.
I have a clarification, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I have a clarification. I voted no on the Arcata item. It was a three-one vote.
My apologies.
No worries.
So we got the dream team.
Good morning, Chair, Board, Chair Bone, members of the board, Sean Quincy with the County Administrative Office. This is an exciting, exciting time of year for the county. This is kind of the kickoff for the development of next year's legislative platform. We have our friends Karen Lang and Dylan Elliott here from Shaw Yoder, Antweesh Melzer and Lang. They are state lobbyists. They're here to provide an end of session, wrap-up. Yesterday, we did spend all day meeting with department heads, members of your boards, talk about issues that you have seen over the years, and some ideas on things that we can approach for 2025. And with that, I'll turn it over to Karen and Dylan. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members. Thank you for having us this morning. I'd like to introduce Dylan Elliott.
I'm sorry, is your mic on? I didn't mean to interrupt. On your mic, yeah, you'll see. There you go.
I rarely get told by anybody I need a microphone. Good morning, again. Karen Lang with Shaw Yoder, Antweesh Melzer and Lang. Wanted to introduce Dylan Elliott. He is new to our firm. He joined us in March of 2024. It's his first presentation to the County Board of Supervisors, so be gentle. And we're here first to kind of give you a summary of what happened in 2024 in Sacramento, and talk a little bit about what we see happening in the fall, or in November, and then going into 2025, so we're ready to go with your platform, which we're working on starting yesterday. So as far as a point in time for the public's benefit, the legislature adjourned at midnight on August 31st, and anything that did not make it to the governor by then is dead for the year. So if you get asked about any bill that does not have the two Xs in it, which I'll get to in a second, any bill that did not get to the governor is dead. And the governor has until September 30th at midnight to act on everything that was sent to him. He did a huge dump of bills yesterday morning, or excuse me, Sunday morning. He acted on about 250 bills or so, but he's got maybe 600 or 700 left to go before the end of the month. So we're on pins and needles for a couple of big ones. For perspective, of the bills he's still sitting on, there were actually 5,561 bills introduced in the two-year session, and about 900 went to him at the end of this session, and about 1,000 in the first part of the session. So a lot of new bills coming our way, several of major consequence that I'll cover in a second. But this year is a little bit different than we've seen in that the last day of the regular session, the governor announced he wanted to convene a special session on oil prices. The Assembly responded rapidly and convened it in the middle of that day on the 31st of August. The Senate, led by your senator, took a more circumspect approach to what the governor was asking for, and has not yet, the Senate has not yet convened the special session on oil prices in the Senate. The Assembly has had a couple hearings now, and they actually have floor sessions scheduled for October 1st to take up some measures that have been introduced. The idea behind this special session is trying to create a stockpile of California blended fuels, so that when a California refinery that makes California-specific gas goes offline, that there's a stockpile to call upon so that we don't have the spikes at the pump. The oil companies that manufacture these blends have major concerns with the proposal because of the cost of storing that quantity of fuel. And so we'll see what happens on the first. I think that Senator McGuire and Senate leadership are waiting to see if the Assembly can send legislation over to them before they go to the extent of actually convening the session. They're certainly very well aware that it has been convened. The last night of session was marked by a lot of disagreements and almost dysfunction, I would say. Several measures that were in the second house waiting to go back to the first house never actually made it back, and several measures died because of that. It was literally a time management issue. None of the bills that died in that circumstance were ones you were closely tracking, but it was the first time I'd seen that happen in quite a long time, pre-COVID. And as far as legislation, that was of very specific interest to the county. There's a measure on vegetation management near highways that's on the governor's desk that was AB 99, a measure related to cannabis and sales, which is also on the governor's desk, some measures related to public health. 440, SB 440, which is something the county's been tracking for a couple years, or for two years. It was introduced in the first year, would allow Humboldt or any jurisdiction to form a multi-jurisdictional housing authority to work on housing-related matters. It would have taxing authority, et cetera. That measure is on the governor's desk, and actually, I do believe he signed it last week when we sent you your report. He hadn't acted on things, so apologies. At this time of year, things can change pretty rapidly, but SB 440 was signed. And then I did want to flag one measure that was opposed by the county, as well as CSAC, RCRC, and many counties. AB 2561 was signed Sunday morning by the governor. This measure creates additional activities that the board will have to engage with to address vacancies by bargaining unit if the vacancy rate is over 20%. There is no exception for very small departments. I think throughout the state of California, there may be departments with only three or four employees, and if someone leaves, that would trigger 20% plus vacancy rate. There is no exception for those very small departments, despite, you know, how unfair that might seem with the departure of just one staff. But that measure is now the law, despite the overwhelming opposition of many local governments. And we did include a report on several budget items that all counties cared about. As you may have remembered, back in January and then May, we were facing pretty significant budget deficits. The state's revenue picture went a little upside down, and it seems to be improving. But there was a very serious and significant deficit early in the year that was closed by one-time expenditures drawing down billions of dollars from the state's reserve, and we still have more in reserves. So if we have another deficit year, which, fingers crossed, it doesn't seem like we're going to have, but there is still more money in the reserves that the state can call upon to help balance the budget, so you don't experience these huge swings in state revenues since you deliver so many services on behalf of the state. When the state's budget deficit is big, it really directly and seriously impacts counties. And so it matters a lot what the fiscal health situation is for the state when it comes to counties and your programs. So there were several proposals that were included in the January budget for cuts that counties pushed back on. Want to say just a few, like the Victims Assistance Program was up for cuts, and it was also reduced at the federal level. Those funding levels were restored, which was a very significant priority for counties. Funding in the public health arena was not cut to the extent that we were concerned it could be. There was funding for wind energy development. However, one of the measures which the county continued to watch but did not have a position on, that was authored by Assembly Member Addis from San Luis Obispo, they would have made sure that local community groups had access to resources associated with impacts from offshore wind being developed in your communities. The governor vetoed that, but there's a veto message related to funding, and I don't think that she's going to go away as we continue to look at what offshore wind means in local communities. I did want to touch on two other major issues that came at the end of session, or didn't actually. Wind, of course, was in Proposition 4. There's funding for offshore wind in Proposition 4. But I wanted to touch on wildfire insurance. I know several of you have constituents that are being impacted by this insurance crisis that we're facing. There was an effort to try to do some legislation at the end of session to stabilize what is happening. Unfortunately, it did not find a way to show up in print and become enacted. What is happening, and actually, it's happening here, very exciting, Cal Poly Humboldt is going to be partnering with the Department of Insurance to work on how to develop catastrophic modeling for insurance rates. The insurance industry is able to look 20 years in the rearview mirror for their actuarial tables, but they were not allowed to look forward to incorporate the cost of climate change in their risk models. Cal Poly is going to be working on that with the Department of Insurance to figure out how to set rates that will stabilize the insurance market and keep insurers in California. Unfortunately, accessibility doesn't equate to affordability for your constituents, and when we talk about that with the Insurance Commissioner's Office, it seems as though their perspective is if we can keep insurers in the market and continue to making, continue making investments in prevention, hopefully over time, the risk models will lower in terms of like the forecasted cost of offering insurance, and then costs will go down over time while the insurance industry will stay in the California market, because it is creating negative impacts across real estate transactions, affordability, and frankly, just protecting folks in the event that their home burns down. So that's unfortunately not a lot of progress so far on wildfire insurance, but there's work happening now. The second item I wanted to flag for you, although individually, I'm sure you're all very well aware, at the end of session, there was a measure, AB 2223, which had to do with removing intoxicating hemp products from shelves and get them behind age gates. The measure was in the Assembly Appropriations Committee, and the governor's office offered a very substantial set of amendments to the measure that created a lot of concern for smaller growers. And ultimately, the measure was held, but the governor, shortly after session adjourned, released a set of emergency regulations to get intoxicating hemp products off of the regular store shelves and only into dispensaries where there are age gates. We anticipate that the hemp industry will be suing over these regulations, and so the issue will come back in 2025, I'm sure of it. And so when we were talking about the platform yesterday, we were looking at trying to find a way to incorporate that topic into the platform, so we're ready to go and able to respond rapidly should a measure be introduced in 2025. I did want to note how wonderful your delegation has been. You are very fortunate to have the pro temp of the Senate as your state senator. That comes in really handy when you've got major concerns or budget items that are of great importance. Senator McGuire and his staff have been wonderful, as has been Dr. Wood. He's termed out. He will be replaced in November, and we will look forward to working with your new delegation member. One of the to-do items that we have from yesterday's meetings is make sure that we've got sort of a briefing packet for the new assembly member so that they can hit the ground running when it comes to things that are going on here that are of great import. A couple of items came up yesterday in our meetings that look like the county may need to sponsor a few pieces of legislation, talking to your Public Works Director, and looking at things we can do to help locally. So with that, we're heading into November. A lot of things on the ballot. I heard about the discussion here on Proposition 35. Certainly Proposition 36 is of great interest to counties, has to do with reinstating penalties for certain crimes that are committed in organized retail theft and fentanyl-related crimes. And that is on the ballot. And then, of course, top of the ticket, all the way to the bottom, there's also ACA-10, which several local governments were in support of. It will reduce the threshold for voter approval of certain property taxes in order to construct roads and affordable housing, et cetera. That is also on the ballot, along with a new assembly member to represent Humboldt. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and Dylan, feel free to jump in if you want to answer anything, and thank you for having us today.
Bring back the board. Supervisor Madron.
Oh, thank you. We really appreciate your work, as you know, and I know our department heads and board really appreciate the chance to engage directly each year with you folks. On the, one of the bills, there was one for extending the deadline on earthquake retrofitting. Definitely has an impact on our local hospital, St. Joe's, in terms of the acute rehab unit. Did the governor sign that bill?
We were looking at it yesterday.
Is it one of the 600?
It's still on his desk, unfortunately. I would say there were two measures on seismic, and the one that you have a hospital specifically named in that bill, the other one was vetoed because the author did not take some amendments that the governor's office insisted be taken. I don't think that the Dr. Wood bill has that same problem. So hopefully, it will get signed. He's signing some more bills this afternoon related to farmworker housing, but sometimes when he announces that he's going to take action, sometimes he tucks other bills in there. And so whenever he does that, so later today, there will be a legislative update, and we'll see what he has signed. But we are very tuned in to that bill. We understand the challenges. We had a very good conversation with your Public, or your Health and Human Service Agency Director, and got a real feel for the hospital situation here and how critical that bill is.
Let us know when it's signed, please. Last one on the fire insurance. I appreciate that there's efforts being made on that regard, and some say in two years, when Senator McGuire turns out, he may become our Insurance Commissioner. He'd be the guy to tackle this stuff. But at any rate, I appreciate the efforts to try and, that over time, maybe if there's less homes lost in fires, it might help, you know, change the risk assessments and all that. But, you know, the fires in LA, I mean, really bring this to, you know, some counties are a lot better at land use planning, I will say, than others, and when you put 30,000 homes in high fire risk areas due to your land use policies, that puts all of it at risk in terms of our insurance policy. that puts all of it at risk in terms of our insurance policies because that keeps happening in these urban areas where, you know, development is not really following good land use policies like I think we try to do here in Humboldt. So that's really concerning. And I really, I mean, ultimately, I've been involved in some of the task force work happening around the state on fire. And ultimately, I think homeowners want to have their assessments done at the parcel level, you know, because you can have a neighborhood with a whole lot of people that aren't doing defensible space or anything else, but you have one homeowner who maybe has spent a whole lot of money on defensible space and home hardening and all these other measures. And they really should be rewarded for that. And so no matter how good they get at all these models, it still doesn't get us to that point of really respecting the individual efforts that people put into it. So I'm hoping, and I think the task force has been looking at that, like, could we have Cal Fire come around and do inspections, you know, that then tee into the insurance companies' risk assessments and stuff? A lot to work on there. Not asking for anything, just wanted to make that point.
If I, if I may, there are opportunities to make comments about the draft regulations. And that is one of the points that local agencies have been making is that there are communities making significant investments at the county level, at the city level, and firewise communities that it doesn't seem like the insurance companies want to have to take into account when they set rates in certain areas of the state. And we've tried to flag that for our county clients. Please send in comments because we know counties are making investments exactly like that. We do understand some insurance companies are using drones to take a look at properties so that they can understand parcel by parcel what is happening. And hopefully, that will, if you've got a property owner that's doing all the right things, hopefully, that will be factored in. But I would strenuously encourage anyone listening that is worried about that to send in a letter on these regulations that are under development right now urging that the insurance companies be required to incorporate those kinds of investments into the rate setting that they make.
Thank you.
Supervisor, if I may as well, just wanted to offer, in terms of legislative actions being taken to your comments regarding land use and planning discussions, there was a bill that moved through the legislature this year, SB 571, by Senator Allen from Santa Monica. That bill was ultimately vetoed by the governor, but it would have asked his Office of Planning and Research to do consideration of what kinds of things can be done to plan for these adverse wildfire events, but it also included flood and earthquake to be mindful of the state at large. I think it's pretty likely that that conversation continues, but that particular vehicle is dead for the year.
Well, I appreciate that because for those that are actually being responsible in their land use planning, there should be a reward system for that, right? And on the other side of that, some sort of penalty. If you're not going to plan properly, why should everybody in the state pay the cost of that, right? So, thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Just to remind you that in our general plan update, we principally permitted residential development in all our high fire zones. So, just for what it is. And also, I think that it is, it is an interesting effort to granularize that data in terms of what individual homeowners may or may not be doing in terms of their insurance rates. But understanding that if you're an insurance company, and I am not, and but if you, in the state seems to be getting more and more into this world, annually reviewing that has a cost that also would have to be embedded into the rates. And so it's a pretty complicated situation. That being said, I'm actually just going to thank you guys for the work that you do. I want to just let people know that we have a great team in Sacramento that has been very helpful to all of us here in helping us. As you may imagine, we individually have different interests in relation to, and common interests in relation to state legislative actions and policies. And we all both appreciate you coming to visit, but the very responsive work that you guys do for us. And when any of us are in Sacramento, I really appreciate it when we see you there and also stop in and use your offices when we need to. I really appreciate that very much. So thanks for this report. We have, as you know, this is for the public, you know, annual, we do our legislative update. I recommend people will review our last legislative update. Take a look at that. And if you have comments for any one of the supervisors or staff on any of those things coming up into our next year, please do that. Thanks.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I also want to thank you guys for your time yesterday and all the updates you bring. I did want to just add a little bit about the, or have you add a little bit about the hemp things that are going on and how that really concerns Humboldt County. But Director Ford brought a report on AB, help me on the.
2223.
Thank you. And so if you could give us a little update on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. I learned, kind of made a joke about it. I learned more about intoxicating hemp in a week and a half than I ever thought I would ever need to know in my whole life. Because it had been going along, the measure by Assembly Member Aguirre Curry had been introduced because on the public health side, there had been this growing concern about these products that are enjoying a federal, like, they're sort of a federal air cover that they have, right? Because it's legal on the federal side to grow it. And, you know, when California looked at legalizing hemp, it was with, in the context of like food and fiber. And there wasn't really any contemplation that these would be intoxicating products. And that's why it was, it got a like, you know, it didn't get stuck in the regulatory purgatory that is trying to be a licensed legal cannabis cultivator in California. And so these products started appearing on the shelves. Kids started getting sick. It was a growing, public health concern. And so Aguirre Curry put the bill in to get these products off the shelves to protect kids. And then right in the summer recess, and this is normal, this was not a jam job on behalf of the governor, but they usually wait to see what bills are really going to get close to the governor's desk before they really heavily engage. Because with 5,500 bills, there's not enough staff in the governor's office to thoughtfully engage in all of them. You got to wait a little bit to see what's really got a shot. And so in this, right before summer recess, this very significant amount of technical amendments, and it got confused, like, some people were like, technical assistance? It was not tech, I mean, it was like 50 pages of amendments. Got presented to the author's office from the administration, and it created a lot of concern amongst small cultivators in the cannabis industry because it was blessing the existence of these products and incorporating them into the stream, like, into the marketplace when it, when they're, the outcome of the product, like, the result of using the product is the same as cannabis, I think. But it was, it didn't have to go through CEQA, and it didn't have to pay all these taxes. It was just at the point of sale, like any other thing that you would buy, you'd pay taxes on. And it was a, the cannabis community was very concerned about what that meant to the smaller guys that have such incredible amount of burden on them from the cannabis side. So it kind of blew up, I would say, because there was just, it was, it was too much to, all of it happened kind of fast, and there was no way to get everybody, not everyone was going to be happy because you had two folks, like, two different kinds of parties in support of 223 and two in opposition. So you had the hemp growers that, of course, hated it because then they would kind of get setback on what they were doing in the marketplace. And then the small growers didn't like the bill with the amendments because it was blessing a product that they are going to be in direct competition with but can't possibly compete with financially because it's cheaper to grow hemp. And then on the, on the support side of the bill, you had really public health because the kids were, kids were getting sick from the product. And so it was, it was a tough tension, and it just didn't get worked out. But the governor himself had walked into a total wine and more. I don't know how much I should say in the public in case someone gets an idea, but it was, there was no, there are no age gates at that time on hemp products. So kids could go into like a CVS or a gas station. And the governor did, he went in and he saw the stuff on the shelves that you could buy without any kind of ID, and kids are getting sick from it. And so he felt really strongly, he wanted something done. But the threatened lawsuit will come to be that the hemp industry, who is enjoying this new marketplace, doesn't want to have to go behind age gates and only sell their stuff in dispensaries. So they're pretty unhappy with the governor's emergency regulations, which are in the public comment period right now. The, well, the comments were due last week, and then they should become operative. But it's assumed that they will litigate. The Department of Cannabis Control is totally, you know, they're well tuned into the reality that's going to happen. We don't know what the courts will do. So I think that's why you should all expect to see something around intoxicating hemp come back. The policy question for the county would be, do you want to, is the genie really out of the bottle and you can't put it back in? So we got to figure out how to live with it? Or do you want to pursue a strong, like, a prohibition on intoxicating hemp products in California? And how do you want to treat the public health side of it? Because you have two different hats you wear on this policy from a public health and then also your cultivator county. So it's just a question of how you want to thread the needle, if at all. Hopefully, that was what you wanted.
It was. Thank you.
All right, I'll open it up to public comment.
Hi. So I just want to say, I didn't see where this item was anywhere on the agenda, and I'm really glad that they were able to make their presentation today. But as somebody who got here after 9:30, the reason that we have the agenda, right, is a legal requirement.
It's on a 10 o'clock time set. It's on the agenda. I'm looking at it.
Oh, okay. So, but then earlier in the meeting, you took a lot of things that were on the agenda off, and then you took something that was set for time certain, and you moved it.
No.
And you're a supervisor short, and you moved something that was set for after lunch to earlier. And then Bushnell had to say, oh, the county's not even here to make their presentation. So this item.
Was a 10 o'clock time set.
Oh, I'm so glad. I read through the agenda twice, and I could not find it. So this item was supposed to come before non-agendized public comment? Because I didn't get to participate in non-agendized public comment because non-agendized public comment was moved.
That was at 9:12, 9:14.
Right. It was moved, and traditionally, and pretty much always on your agenda, it's after all of those set items.
It was not moved.
I feel that it's a violation of the Brown Act and that people cannot make intelligible public comment when they have something that's set at a certain time, and then the schedule is changed at the last minute.
Brown Act does not apply in this situation. But I appreciate your input. Thank you. All right. Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the board. Do we need to vote to accept this?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we accept the presentation.
I'll second.
I didn't, and I'll say I didn't get to thank you guys for everything and showing up and everything and doing everything else. And as you know, as we talk about the insurance thing, I spoke in front of the Little Hoover Institute here a while back, and the insurance companies basically came out and said, it's not as much the fire threat as the cost of rebuilding in California. That is the number one driving force to not doing business in California. That's, I mean, the head of the insurance conglomerate came out and said that, that the cost of doing business in California far exceeded any other state. So anyway, FYI. Yes?
One note on insurance rates. It's not just wildfires, but actually, across the Midwest, hail is actually causing extreme amount of damage and is driving rates through the roof and across, across the midsection of this country. So it's not just wildfires.
Lead a good life and don't go to hell, then. So Florida gets hurricanes. We all get a piece of the pie. Anyway, it's been moved and seconded. Nikki?
Thank you, Chair Bone. Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes, and thanks again. And it's nice to meet you.
Thank you. And I got your yes, Chair Bone. Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
And Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Now. McMac or Code Enforcement?
McMac.
Okay.
I said after 10, close to 11.
You're fired.
Good morning. Tracy D'Amico, Clerk of the Board. This morning before you, you have an item to consider making the three at-large appointments to the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee named as the McMac. On August 20th, the board was notified that there were three members on the M Mac that were termed expiration, which was Maya Conrad, Kevin Jenkins, and Kevin Dryer. These are the three at-large appointments made by the entire board. The rest of the committee is made up by Supervisor Steve Madron's picks because it is in McKinleyville. There were six applicants. They've all been contacted. Kevin Dryer has asked not to be considered. He's going to be retiring. He's one of the original members.
Dryer.
Kevin Dryer. So today, we have Maya Conrad, Kevin Jenkins, who have previously served, who asked to continue to serve if that is the board's decision. We have Mary Burke, Clancy Dismet, Susan Lapree, and Stephen Thomas. I reached out to them and letting them know that they could show in person or in Zoom if they would like to make a three-minute statement about their qualifications and their want to serve on this commission. Maya Conrad did reply that she's traveling today and would be unable to participate. I do think she sent you an additional resume and information that the entire board has. So it's really up to your board to appoint three positions. It's a four-year term. You have a list in front of you if you would like to talk to the applicants first, if any of them available, and then move on from there.
Could I make some opening comments?
Oh, she is? Oh, Maya is online. She was traveling, but she thought she might be able to.
Supervisor Madron would like to make comments.
Thank you, Tracy. Appreciate your effort here and reaching out to all the various candidates. And first off, I want to thank all the members of the McMac for their service. They have done an incredible job of working together. They are a very diverse group of people, and it's been really wonderful to watch them come together with a tremendous amount of respect for their differences. I would say that the work with John Ford and his staff on the Town Center ordinance was easily something that could have driven people apart, but in fact, it made them much stronger as they listened to each other and found that respect in working on the benefit of the whole community. I also want to thank Kevin Dryer. Kevin is the longest-standing member of the McMac. I believe he's been there 10 years or so and has dedicated a lot of years to helping the McMac and the community of McKinleyville. So thank you, Kevin, if you're listening or you checked the archives later. Very much appreciate your efforts. I also want to thank all the applicants. It's always wonderful when, you know, we've got three positions, we've got six applicants. That's always a wonderful thing to see people stepping up and being willing to do what is a volunteer job. And I will say, McMac, there's a fair amount of commitment that gets made, not just monthly meetings, but subcommittees and a lot of other work that they do for the community. So with that, I'm certainly ready to make a motion after public comment and after we hear from the applicants. And again, appreciate all the applicants stepping forward. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I'm just confused. You're going to make a motion, but these are at-large, so it's up to our board's discussion, correct? Okay.
Saying I'm willing to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Okay. I was just a little confused. Okay, thank you.
Listen to everything. Being it's my district, I'm more than ready to make a motion, as would be the case for anybody.
All right. Well, first off, I'll open it up to the candidates. And we'll go in order of who has happened. Nikki, do you have people on the phone? I've got Mary Burke first.
Mary was here earlier but had to leave, so.
Okay.
But she was present this morning.
Okay.
The timing.
Maya Conrad?
I do have Maya online.
Okay.
And later on, I can share with some of the comments that Mary shared with me because she had to leave. Whenever appropriate.
Hello. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes, we can.
Hi, Supervisors. Thank you so much. This is Maya Conrad, and I'm sorry that I can't be there in person. It has been a pleasure to serve on the McMac for the last five years. And as Supervisor Madron said, we have a special thing going with the McMac. We come from diverse perspectives, and yet, there is a tremendous amount of respect for the communities that we serve in our diverse McKinleyville. I would really love to continue in that pursuit, especially because of all of our work with the Town Center and seeing that ordinance going through the EIR process right now. We also have some very exciting things happening with active transportation and working with Tom Mattson at Public Works to work on a quick bill design for Hiller to try to make that a little bit more of a friendly road right between Central Avenue and McKinleyville Avenue. And then finally, I am so honored to serve on the McKinleyville Community Forest Advisory Committee. Committee as an appointed member of the McMac. So my hope and wish is to continue this community service for McKinleyville, and I hope that you will reappoint me for that position for one more term. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any? Okay. And then Clancy Dismet? Anybody on there? All right. Kevin Jenkins? Suzanne Lipra? Stephen Thomas? With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Do you have comments from all of the people, or just from one?
I have comments from those that contacted me, and that was Mary Burke.
You were talking to after? Okay. I don't know, I just, it seems to me that might be, well. We can take her honor value over, you know. All right. With that, I'll bring it back to the board. We'll bring it back to the board for discussion. We'll take her honor merits of her application. Supervisor Wilson?
Well, just on the merits of the applications and what I know about folks in the community, I mean, I have my top three, which is fine, which is, I just want to throw out there to start with, and that's, and it's really the top three on my list in alphabetical order. As, but, just happens to be that way. As someone with a last name with a W, this isn't always the case. So, no, it's funny. I want to, Mary Burke, Maya Conrad, and Clancy Dismet, but I'm willing to hear more discussion. I'm just, I just want to get the conversation started. But I also think that Kevin Jenkins has brought a good perspective to the McMac as well, and just what I've seen over the years. And I would say it's a casual, you know, glancing of what's happening through this through the reporting of the Matter of Reunion, and, you know, some stuff on the radio occasionally. So those are my thoughts, but I would like to hear what Supervisor Madron has to say about his conversation with any of these and other supervisors, if anyone else has talked to any of their members as well. That was it, just trying to get it started.
You bet. Supervisor Bushnell?
I, I will wait for discussion from the board.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, of the six candidates here, three of them did contact me. One was Mary Burke, who was here earlier, and what she wanted to say was she wanted to thank Maya Conrad for her work on the multimodal subcommittee that has been very successful, working with Tom Mattson and the county. In fact, there was a grant to really delve into the details of multimodal improving pedestrian and bicycle safety throughout the community, as well as work that was done on transit investigations for McKinleyville. She was also a chair for our McMac Committee when we started the Town Center Ordinance process, and really did a great job there as chair. And again, I'm talking about what Mary Burke said about Maya, also about Maya's work with the Forest Advisory Committee. She also wanted to thank Kevin Jenkins for his work on the McKinleyville Incorporation Exploration Subcommittee. Kevin Jenkins chairs that, and Kevin has been on the McMac for, I think, eight years, and he has, brings a real perspective to the committee on business, and also provides a great diversity to that committee in regards to his perspectives and all that. And as I said, you know, my work, I get to make three appointments. Three of them are board discretion at large, and then two of them, one is the manager of, the general manager of the McKinleyville Community Service District, and one is a member of the board of the Community Service District, and in this case, that's Greg Orsini the last two years. And Kevin has just done a great job at, you know, really working on all of those various elements. And as I said earlier, I wanted to really thank Kevin Dryer, and Maya also, or Mary, wanted to also thank Kevin Dryer for his long service. Kevin Jenkins also contacted me and said that he was very interested in continuing to serve, and I frankly see Kevin, as I said, and as Mary said, to be a really important element of diversity on the committee. The other three applicants did not contact me. I'm certainly available, but I know they put in their applications, and I appreciate that, and they bring different strengths to the table as well. My preference would be to continue with Kevin Jenkins and Maya Conrad. We've really got a great team of people that is very diverse, represents the community quite well, and have shown their abilities to work together for the community's benefit. And Mary Burke has also been very engaged with McMac. She sits on a couple of the subcommittees, the multimodal subcommittee, as well as the McKinleyville Incorporation Exploration Subcommittee, or what they like to call MICE. And so I think Mary would provide a great addition. She's up to speed, she attends most of the meetings and all that. And I guess my interest as, you know, the representative of McKinleyville, is to have a diverse group, first of all, that represents the community well, and a group of people that have shown that they can actually work really well for the benefit of the whole community. So my preference would be Mary Burke, Maya Conrad, and Kevin Jenkins. But of course, it's up to the board to make that decision. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, was that your motion?
Well, again, we haven't heard from the public yet, so.
You didn't. All right. Open this up to public comment.
Good morning, Chair Bone and Board of Supervisors. You know, you've been here a long time. When Supervisor Bone is again the chair, is this like your third, fourth?
Third.
Third time. Anyway, I am happy to be before you this morning and offer a ground-level perspective from the McMac. I'm the chair this year, and have worked hand-in-hand with Kevin Jenkins, with Maya Conrad, and with Mary Burke. And I would heartily support their being appointed or reappointed, as the case may be, to the committee. And there's a couple of reasons. The first is, all three are very hardworking, have put a lot of time and a lot of effort into the committee on behalf of the community. I think all of them also listen to what the community has to say. And above ideology, what I think is really important is what Supervisor Madron has talked about, which is, although we come from different backgrounds, although we have different experience, and we have different ideas and opinions, what we do well together is listen to one another and figure out what our common value is, which, when I think you listen to people, you find out that you may have a lot more interest in common than you do differences. And I think that the current group that we have working is very good at that, has figured out how to do it with respect for one another. Both Maya Conrad and Kevin Jenkins currently chair the two working subcommittees of the McMac, and are doing an excellent job, putting in a lot of work, and really, really trying hard to bring together what the community perspective is and what might be best for the community. Maya, as Supervisor Madron said, has led the McMac through some really tough conversations at the full committee level over the Town Center. And I think both are very worthy of being reappointed, and put a lot of time and effort in, and make for good decisions. Because when we can put the diversity together and listen to each other, I think we get more full and better decisions that are made. As far as the open committee appointment, because Kevin Dryer is not reapplying, Mary Burke has been and continues to show up for our meetings and gives a lot of input. She has a really special skill of being able to take folks from diverse perspectives, and brings a vision of the committee, or of the community forward, and is able to bring people with diverse perspectives and have them make decisions together. And so I would really, really support having her appointed, as well as two incumbents. So thank you for listening.
All right. Seeing none other, I will bring it back to the board. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Lisa. You know, Mary has also served on the McKinleyville Community Service District for four years. She was the president of the board for a year, and so very engaged. At any rate, my motion would be to appoint Mary Burke, Maya Conrad, and Kevin Jenkins to the three at-large positions.
Second. They moved and seconded. No other conversation? Nick?
Thank you, Chair Bone. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yeah.
Chair Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Royal. I'm so sorry. Supervisor Wilson.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
I'm here. And so, yes.
You are here. Thank you, so sorry.
Thank you, Board. Chair?
Thank you. Clerk D'Amico?
Chair, can we have a 10-minute or 5-minute break?
Sure. Five, 11 o'clock, which will turn into 5 after 11. Back and turning. It's two minutes after, I'm going by that clock today. So with that, you get to do this in a couple months, don't worry.
Thank you, Chair Bone.
Yep.
John Ford, Dean Beck, and Shawna South to present the status of the code enforcement work at 473 Quarry Road. We have a presentation that we'll walk through, and ask Mr. Beck to go ahead and walk us through that.
Good morning, I'm going to provide. Good morning, I'm going to provide an update on the property located at 473 Quarry Road in Trinidad. In May 2001, Humboldt County Code, Humboldt County Community Assistance Unit served notice of violation that included these 10 violations. In 2017, code enforcement was transferred to the Planning and Building Department. In August of 2017, the property was served with a notice to abate nuisance and a notice of violation. Both of these went to administrative hearing and to court several times. Both the administrative hearing and the Superior Court proceedings confirmed these 10 violations. Due to the county was $45,000. The court found that the total assessment of the civil penalties for the 10 violations due to the county was $45,000 in ordered payment. Your board approved the civil penalty for near $63,000, which included over $17,000 of administrative costs at the time. That lien was recorded September 29, 2022, and there have been no payments to date, even after the hearing officer's findings and confirmation by the courts. Violations still exist, and the property remains out of compliance. In 2018, a building inspector inspected 15 wood frame structures. Inspections revealed code violations from unsafe stairways, handrails and guardrails, unsafe structures, electrical hazards, wood stoves, and their flues not installed to code in unsanitary conditions. There are adults and children living in these structures without the minimum safety standards, such as smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, fire extinguishers, light, and ventilation standards. There's unsafe stairways, missing guardrail at the second-story landing, handrails and stairs that are not to code and unsafe. Some RVs were being lived in with extension cords running through the windows with no protection, such as GFI, wet rated, or covered. It appears that there are wood stoves inside for heating but installed unsafe. There's junk vehicles being used as residence. There's junk vehicles with solid waste in the back of them. There's barrels that have been used with toilet seats. Presume that those barrels are full of human waste. There's outhouse, there's toilet composting materials that are on site. There's more barrels, there's a bucket commode in this picture here. Here's another outhouse. Those barrels there were taken out, appears from underneath that house there, presumably full of human waste. More junk vehicles. In July of 2021, 14 junk vehicles were tagged for abatement and removal. This has been appealed by the property owner, and a junk vehicle appeal hearing will be scheduled soon.
Dean, when were those, when were the 14 tagged?
In July of 21.
Okay.
We haven't, we don't have the hearing scheduled yet, but the property owner has requested that, and we'll be responding that soon. These are the pictures of the junk vehicles that were tagged during that inspection in July of 21. Some of them were being used as residence, other ones, they're just, they're there. This one here, I think that one had a wood stove in it. Maybe that one's not the one that had the wood stove in it.
Thank you.
More outhouse barrel, there's a bucket next to that barrel, presumably that has solid waste in it, too. Here's a potential timeline for county abatement. Code enforcement will inspect the property for any new junk vehicles and tag them for abatement and removal. It's anticipated that the property owner will file an appeal hearing request and subsequent appeal to the Superior Court. Time is allowed for outside agencies to assist with tenant relocation. It will take several weeks for the approval of the abatement task order, obtaining inspection and abatement warrant from the court, and issuance of permits. If all goes as outlined, county abatement may begin in June of 2025. The preferred path of abating the property is through a receiver. In this case, the receiver responded that due to the number of junk vehicles, solid waste, and structures that need to be removed, receivership is not feasible on this property. This leaves the county in the position of needing to do a county abatement. In August of 21, code enforcement received a bid for an abatement that included demolition and removal of structures, and removal and disposal of junk vehicles at that, the junk vehicles at that time. The bid received in 2021 was over $306,000, and this is over 60% of our code enforcement annual abatement fund.
Is it fair to say that there's probably 20-plus more vehicles since '21, in the last three and a half years?
We haven't been on-site since 2021, so I would, Shawna, do you think there would be more than?
There's quite an increase in vehicles.
I couldn't venture a guess. Yeah, I couldn't, without seeing the property, I wouldn't be able to venture a guess.
I think it's safe to say that conditions have changed over time. They may be fewer, there may be more, but until we get on-site, we won't know.
Okay.
And that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. When was the last time anybody was on-site? Shawna, that would probably be you.
Yeah, I think it was 2022, actually. The previous.
Can you turn your mic on?
Sorry, is that better? I believe it was 2022, we responded for a short inspection specific to some of the vehicles that were there with former code enforcement manager Karen Maynell, but it was a fast inspection, and it was just to check on some of the vehicles.
And at that time, what, did you make a report, and what were the conditions, if you did, at that time?
Conditions were much the same throughout. Conditions were much the same throughout being assigned to the property. I would say they've made improvements with solid waste around the property, junk, but there's still issues remaining around the structures and the vehicles.
Okay. And then, there were 10 violations that were identified in your report. Could we pull that slide back up? Thank you. So, this was done, these 10 conditions were identified in 2017?
These conditions were identified in 2008, and there were 12, there were actually 12 of them that were originally identified. These are the ones that we took to a hearing with the appeal hearing officer.
Uh-huh. So, out of these 10, do you know or have you guys re-inspected to see if any of those have been dealt with? And I don't know where that's, oh, there we go. If you could address that.
Yes. So, after we had the administrative hearing, the code enforcement appeal hearing, the hearing officer issued a notice and order, and after the timeframe that was allowed through the notice and order, we went out and did an inspection to see if any of these items had been abated or cleared up, and in some capacity, all of them remain.
What year was that?
That was in, I would have to look at my notes for the exact year.
Rex seems to think '22 doesn't sound about right.
Was that the visit with Karen Maynell?
Well, I could say, based on my recollection from the 2022 inspection, that was not that inspection I just referred to, but they were all still there in 2022.
Okay. And then, my last question for right now is, you mentioned around $63,000 owed to the county for various things, including administrative, blah, blah. Has there, the communication with the landowner, what, around these, this fine amount, what, what has that been? And I think, maybe Director Ford could answer that. Or Dean, if you know, I'm sorry.
So, that, that has been due. There have been discussions with the property owner to see if there is an alternative way to abate, abatement to address this, and we did pull back on an abatement that was previously scheduled to allow those discussions to occur. Those discussions got to a place where we provided a petition that was submitted on behalf of the property owner to modify the zoning ordinance, to allow this to exist. The staff recommended not accepting that petition, and that was pulled before the Board's consideration of the petition. So, directly in answer to your question, is, it's always been on the table that that needs to be paid.
Mm-hmm.
There have been some things where we've tried to work with the property owner that may have resulted in their thinking to delay paying it. Not sure, can't speak to that. But it's $45,000 approximately in fines and penalties, $17,000 approximately in administrative costs. Every, just for clarification, every time we have to work on this, that administrative cost goes up.
And I have one more question. Through the chair, is that okay?
Please.
So, the $17,000 that the county is directly out because that's staff time, have you, obviously, you've been working on this, and it sounds like Dean and his team. So, is this past, the $17,000 from the past, and you have a current, or is that current too today?
No, that is just what the hearing officer and the court identified as being due. We have additional charges since then.
Do you know what those are?
I do not.
Okay. And then, my last question would be, and maybe to Shawna or Dean, do we know how many people live on the site?
To answer, no. To answer your question, no.
Shawna, do you?
I have heard various numbers throughout being assigned the case. I think the most recent I heard was around 30, but I don't know if that's still accurate.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions for right now.
Back. Supervisor Wilson? Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, these are always difficult situations, I will say, because there is such a lack of housing for people. You know, I really appreciate the work the county has done in the last few years, John and your team, to bring forward a lot of ordinances. You know, many years ago, it was the emergency housing declaration that is still in place, many, many years later. And more recently, the emergency housing, what's it, the EHV and the DUV ordinances, that as long as there is the emergency declaration in place, these ordinances are allowed. If that declaration were to go away, would these newer ordinances still apply?
So, the emergency housing village would not, would go away?
Okay.
Those are only valid so long as the housing crisis declaration exists.
What about the dependent unit village?
Same with them.
That would go away if the emergency declaration disappeared. Do you see that emergency declaration? I mean, have things changed in regards to our housing crisis, and our homelessness issues, people experiencing homelessness, to where you might see that declaration going away anytime soon?
We're not anticipating that, nor envisioning that at this time.
What do you think it would take for that declaration to end?
Well, I think, you know, I don't know what an empirical number would be, but it would really be that we're not seeing people, more and more people relegated to living on the street, living without shelter.
So, it takes some serious improvements in those numbers.
Right.
Our point-and-count times and all that kind of stuff. Recently, we had that presentation from DHHS, and it was noted that they aren't going onto private property to get those numbers. And so, we know the numbers are much higher, because in many cases, these camps are on private property, you know, hidden away from, from view in the forested areas. So, it's probably much larger than what that suggests. I know it certainly is in McKinneville, where I have direct activity in a lot of those camps with cleanups and things like that. And I will say that, you know, I really appreciate the work of Betty Chin, and I know Supervisor Bone did a lot of work to get those PG&E trailers that then got burned up, but then they got some new stuff, and so, there's a couple of things happening there. And of course, Arcade House Partnership has done a lot of work, but some of the recent changes in funding are, have actually decreased the money that is available to nonprofits and the county to actually run sanctioned camps, to provide the staffing, to provide all the things that go along with trying to provide those kinds of services. And I know Arcade House, I mean, they've done amazing work, frankly. Some of the hotel conversions and other things they've done, but what I'm hearing is that it's getting even harder to be able to run these things. And so, we don't have, you know, County Beck had told me that the county doesn't run these camps. They don't put together these things. What they do is, they have funding that comes from the state or other sources, and then it's nonprofits that step up and typically, you know, partner with the county, submit grant proposals to get the funding to be able to run a sanctioned camp, or a safe parking lot, or other things. But we now have ordinances that allow for that to occur, but as that funding is now once again decreased, we're not seeing anything new. In fact, we're seeing a collapsing of even existing services in that regard. Aha. You know, they provide a shower service, that they run around with a van and try to provide those kinds of services. We have a lot of churches involved. We have, you know, the Joyful Healer in McKinneville provides services. Even our Family Resource Center in McKinneville provides services for, for folks experiencing homelessness. I think in Southern Humboldt shows doing a lot of amazing work, and I believe they're even working with some private property owners, if I'm not mistaken. And really, it's oftentimes these private property owners that are stepping up and saying, "We want to provide these things." And I think that's what Charles Garth has tried to do here for years. Are there issues with solid waste, abandoned vehicles, and other things? Certainly. Are there some conditions that a lot of people would think are substandard? Certainly. But I've been in this community of people and on-site many, many times, as recently as about 4 months ago, and I know progress is being made. It's not as fast as we would like. There are still issues, but I know they're committed to trying to move forward. And so, for me, I remember when we dealt with the Green Valley Motel, which, in Ory, which was really not a pretty picture. I mean, there were rats running around, there were cockroaches. It was a nightmare. And there was a lot of issues with drugs and other problems going on there, and homeless folks in the, in the bushes down by the river, and coming back and forth to Green Valley, and on and on. But I will tell you, there are no big drug issues at this particular housing complex. Do they smoke some pot? Do they drink a few beers? Certainly. But it's, it's never been an issue of a drug issue there, nor has there ever been any kind of a health outbreak. Now, are pit privies, or I'm sorry, barrel privies acceptable in my world? No. You know, but there was one picture of a composting privy, a proper one that has a two-story structure that allows for the waste with sawdust and other things mixed to actually break down as it turns its way down slope. So, again, there are a lot of things that need to be done, but the last inspection was at least 2 years ago. And I think, in all fairness, what we really need before this Board takes an action here today is to do a new inspection with the cooperation of the landowner, or with a warrant, or whatever we need, but we need a, a current condition inspection. And I think when you do that, you will find that there has been progress. Is it enough? No. Does it need to increase in speed and density? Yes. And then, more recently, there's been this issue of the driveway access, and who actually owns that property. And I know that, speaking with the owner yesterday, that they are in the process of getting some survey work done, and trying to further identify where the corners are and where the property lines are. There is a claim in an email that I think we all received that talks about prescriptive rights or adverse rights to that area, because it's been going on for more than 7 years. Again, that's, those are issues not for this Board, as much as it may be legal issues for a court, or something else in regards to property ownership. And.
Oh, in Trinidad.
Excuse me. Okay, sorry. Hang on, hang on. You've got to get muted. Okay, thank you. So, you know, I, I think that the ideal process here would be to do a current inspection, and I will also offer once again that I know that the owner and one of the, one of the persons working with the owner has, came in yesterday to try and get some application materials to move toward a EHV or a DUV type of village, which just became law, I think on Friday, I believe, of last week, finally got put into motion after this Board approved that. But the first step there is to do a petition, I believe, because in this case, the property is zoned, I believe, AG, and that wasn't one of the allowable zones for these types of villages. And I brought forward those arguments when we were reviewing those ordinances. I thought that I understand why we wouldn't necessarily want these things on what you might consider classic ag land, out in the hills, or wherever, in the bottoms, or whatever. But in this case, this is ag land that's right next to an industrial quarry, right next to a very large residential neighborhood. And I always thought that it really probably ought to be some sort of other, like an R3, or any number of other things, but it's not. And so, as I understand it, Director Ford, the process would be to do a petition first to the Board that would request Board support for moving forward with a general plan amendment and/or zoning amendment. Is that correct? Is that the way that process would work?
Well, there would need to be 2 parts in this particular, actually, 3 parts in this particular situation. Number 1 is, they could petition for a general plan amendment and a rezone.
Okay.
But the emergency housing village needs to be operated by a nonprofit, by a religious institution, somebody that's engaged in providing housing to the unhoused.
Yep.
Then the third part of that is that those structures or shelters still need to comply with the building code.
Yep.
And so, the things that are out there probably are not going to qualify for that. And, and, and so, that has always been the hang-up in terms of talking through, trying to find a path forward other than abatement. And there, from at least my understanding, has always been a resistance to recognizing that if you wanted to go through a process to rezon the property, to do something different, that the shelters need to be replaced with things that comply with the building code.
Yeah, absolutely. And you and I have had a lot of discussions about this, like the recreational vehicle piece, because, you know, with COVID, there was a real increase in a lot of people living in recreational vehicles. And I know there's a concern about that in regards that they weren't really designed to be lived in year-round because of the de-gassing that happens. They're not designed to live in permanently, like a mobile home, or other, you know, structures and stuff. But we also talked about yards, tents, and other types of structures that, you know, would provide that housing. You know, one of the things that's not included in this estimate here of abatement, the $306,000 estimate that is now quite a few years old, so probably could be a lot higher given costs today. One of the things that's not included is the cost of, you know, just people losing their homes. Where do they go? You know, what's the cost to the county of suddenly having 30 people that are homeless? And again, the property owner has done a good job of trying to provide homes, however that might be, without a health outbreak, without a lot of other things. And there have been limited complaints over the years, unlike many of the things we've seen come before this Board, where the complaints are through the roof on, on stuff. And I know when we did the Green Valley Motel, first, we fumigated it so that when we tore it down, the rats and the, and the cockroaches didn't run over to the elementary school next door, right, and things like that. That was a $80,000 to $100,000 price tag. And then, we worked for a long time with DHHS to try and work with the residents, to help find alternative housing, to find programs and other things that could provide services and stuff like that. So, none of that's included in this estimates here. There's certainly a cost to the county of suddenly having 30 more people without homes, and that's a very, it's, it's more than a dollar cost. It's a, a trauma for, for people, especially for children and, and young folks and stuff, but even for the parents who are struggling to try and make ends meet. So, it's a lot bigger picture than, I think, just the simple elements of abatement and stuff like that. So, I mean, for me, in an ideal world, number 1, before we do anything today, we would get an inspection, so we have current information. Number 2, based on that inspection, I think we'll find that some progress has been made, and I think we could then make it very clear. Look at, here's, here's the additional progress that needs to be made within the next 2 months, not a year, not 2 years, but here's what it is. And if you're not able to make those things happen, then you give us no choice but to abate. But even then, we're going to have to figure out how we deal with this displacement. You know, there's a cost to all of that, no matter what decision we make, if we're going to end this, this thing. And I, I just wish there was a pathway forward. I will say that I know Charles also bought the property down by Trinidad in the city limits that was a church, and I believe that sometimes he has talked about in a way that he does provide a religious element in terms of how he runs his, his stuff there, as well as how he runs this particular village up at Yeha. So, I don't think that's a hurdle that would be that hard to overcome, frankly, because becoming a church is not that difficult, frankly speaking. Nonprofits more complicated. So, I mean, I, I just wish, I mean, we've created all these ordinances. We still have a declaration because things are very serious, and I, I just wish there was a pathway forward to where we could get to a place where we could allow for private property owners to be stepping up and wanting to do partnerships and provide housing that is so desperately needed. And I know you and your staff have worked really hard in this regard. I mean, this has been going on a long time, which really shows the empathy, I think, that you have all showed in regards to, you know, how difficult this stuff is. I, I really appreciate you and your staff for the hard work that you do. It's not easy by any means, so I, no way I want to disparage any of that effort. I think you have shown tremendous tolerance in terms of trying to work with things and stuff. So, anyway, I've talked for quite a bit here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just pass it on to the rest of the Board. And I know we have a lot of members of the public here that also want to comment today. I hope folks can make those comments constructive, you know, and, and figure out a pathway forward. So, thank you very much.
He's got a question. Could you pull up the aerial of this facility again one more time, please? Supervisor Wilson? Supervisor Wilson?
Just a couple of questions. One is in relation to the complaint element of this. And so, you know, a lot of what we do is complaint-driven. So could you, and without, I know sometimes it's a little bit sensitive because we don't, people are sensitive. I don't want constituents to think that their complaints are brought out in public in these forums because I want to make sure that people understand they're confidential. But I do want to, I do want to ask this, like, are we, have we, was this complaint-driven? Do we still, are we still receiving concerns from the public or from, in the neighborhood or beyond about this situation?
This is absolutely complaint-driven, and yes, we have received recent complaints.
Okay, great. And is there a belief that the property owner is limited in their capacity to address those complaints? Ma'am, I'm hearing that the property owner is buying real estate in Trinidad, which I assume is not inexpensive. And so when I look at what I see up on the screen here, you know, in these photographs, I'm wondering, you know, does, do we have a, do we have a property owner that's potentially receiving? And I guess it's another question, do we understand or does the property owner receive rent from the folks that are in these spaces? And do we have any idea about what kind of revenue is being generated from this situation to the landowner?
We've got no hard information to understand what rents or money may be being exchanged. We've heard various numbers. We do understand that there is remuneration involved at some level. But that was one of the points of discussion during the cycle we went through trying to decide if there's an alternative process to go through. And, you know, it was discussed that could be voluntary contributions. I mean, the discussion went that far. So I don't think there's limitations in terms of the property owner.
I mean, because we don't know necessarily unless there's other, unless there's other information. You know, we have an issue, well, not just in Humboldt County, many places, substandard housing, but then not-so-substandard rents being charged. And I want to, you know, know or understand that a little bit in this situation. And because I, I think it's important to understand, if I've got a property owner who's deriving income and then investing it in investment properties as opposed to just addressing the issues on this particular property that needs to be dealt with, that's an issue. Then in terms of Supervisor Madron, I guess, has been on the property, has witnessed what he believes to be progress. I don't know what that is specifically. But even so, whatever that may be, he is proposing, you know, to come back and do another review of the site. Have we not been given permission or what stopped us from inspecting this site since 2022?
So in 2022, we were encouraged to slow down the abatement. We had an abatement contractor already scheduled to begin the abatement.
Okay.
And we slowed that down to see, to explore other options, basically. And that was impacted by the death of Ed Denson.
Okay.
So I don't want to be unfair about that, but the fact of the matter is, is that this is a situation where the resolution, if there is ever going to be one, requires some ability of movement and recognition by the property owner that things cannot remain status quo. The county cannot allow people to continue to live in substandard conditions and know about it. Because if anything ever happens, then the county has allowed it to occur.
Yep.
And so it puts us in a very precarious place. And so we have tried to engage in that discussion to see if there was room for the property owner to recognize that, okay, maybe we change the zoning, we change ordinances, we change the structure of what's going on here, and we change the shelters that people are living in to be something that is safe and sanitary.
Yep.
And that is very much the place where we trip and fall in those discussions.
Yeah. And I think, you know, there's a lot of thresholds that we have about enforcement of these rules and regulations and health and safety. And I will say, our job isn't to, isn't, from a health, from a, from a public health perspective, our job is to prevent outbreaks, not to wait and respond to an outbreak of something. And that's, I think, what we're trying to deal with here. So the idea that something hasn't happened doesn't mean that we throw everything aside. And, you know, same, we don't, you know, how we design, all kinds of things in our community are not, they're preventative. They're not waiting to respond. They're not responsive, as much as we can, anyway. And the frame around, you know, the counties, you know, our work in this has been very proactive in so many ways in terms of trying to deal with a lot of these issues. The property owner also has a, has a big responsibility in this case, too. I mean, and so if the property owner isn't responding to a lot of these, to a lot of the, to the issues, especially around the complaints and those sorts of things, then, then that, there's a lot of onus there, especially when you have a property owner that has the resources to deal with a lot of these situations, even in relocation. If the property owner feels very responsible for the folks that are there, if there's a need to adjust in some way, that property owner can take on that responsibility. Otherwise, it really is, you know, the local government and our agencies have to deal with that as Supervisor Madron is saying. That is definitely part of the cost of this. So I'm here to listen to what the public has to say about this and sort of in this context. But it's, as Supervisor Madron has stated, like, the trajectory of this isn't that it can be the status quo forever or even for much longer. There's something, something has to change. That's just sort of, I think, I think that's the reality that we're all dealing with. This sort of the discussion we have up here often is like, what's that strategy? And we agree or disagree on some of those things. But the outcome, even that, I guess, may be something we can discuss a little bit. But really, we really have to, it's the forward movement of this that has to, that we have to push, I think, today. That's why you're bringing this to us.
Well, we're bringing this forward really as an informational item. We're not asking for your approval.
Oh, okay.
We're just telling you, here's what we're going to do. We feel like there are limited options here. So unless the property owner is willing to get up and say, I recognize that things have to change, that doesn't give us a lot of room.
Yeah, I feel you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So you kind of answered my question because I'm looking at the staff report and the recommendations to receive, receive the staff report and provide comment, but it doesn't say to provide you with direction. And so if you could clarify before we get too deep in this hole, what we're actually, what you're asking from us today, if anything? And I think it would simplify things.
So to simplify greatly, what we are responding to here is a lot of, or significant, significant, I'll say, inquiries into what's going on with this. And then concerns with how does it relate to the ordinances? And so rather than trying to continue to respond to things individually, we brought one report to the board for the public, laid out what our intent is. I mean, we can always change the plan if, you know, there's different inputs received. The input we've been looking for that we have not received is a willingness on the part of the property owner to clean up the property and to begin to do things differently.
So then we're going to receive this report and then you're looking for just some comments from us, public comment, and then that call it a day?
Right.
Okay, thank you. I was looking for clarification.
Basically, the nine bullet points you have on here, you're looking for a blessing to proceed. Oh, well, this is, no, you're not looking for the blessing. You're showing us what you're going to do over the next 39 weeks. And if, unless we have a problem with any of that, you're looking for us to step in and...
If you have a problem with it, please let us know. Exactly right.
I, I'm going to go back 16 years. I think we've had plenty of opportunities. It's, you know, it's Ag land. I understand that can be changed when it suits. But did you do the aerial? Did you do that aerial of the site?
We're having technical difficulties.
All right, I'm just saying, it just, I mean, as we talked about, there's a quarry, there's a residential area, and I think it's surrounded a lot by forest. And I know, huh? And we talk a lot about the situations of when it fits our need about building next to a forest. So as we move forward, the structures that are there, it just, I'd feel a little more confident. I mean, we're going to hear a lot of comments and stuff, but nothing's been done. There, I'm going to tell you right now, there's going to be at least 10 to 15 more vehicles that were there than two years ago. Because the neighbors down the road have been saying they've seen cars and trucks hauled in, but nothing coming out. So I would, basically, right here, you've got a site inspection in two weeks, within the next two weeks? Issue notices to bait junk vehicles in violation? There is an appeal hearing? I mean, I, if I owned the property and was collecting rent, I'd take that rent money and start getting rid of vehicles right now and actually showing a progress. But I don't think we're seeing that, you know, the, huh? Yeah, see, I'm, a lot of forest, quite a ways away from the quarry. So a lot of forest land for, I count, I think, 12 or 13 illegal stoves, so. And that's just a guess. I just saw things coming out. So, I mean, if we're going to sit here, what this does is, single-handedly, and I apologize for this, you're, single-handedly, if we kick the road after 16 years down the road any farther, there is no reason to have a code enforcement or an abatement process. There is none at all if we take all the teeth out. So, I mean, as harsh as they may sound, I'll open it up to public comment. Oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Interestingly, on that aerial photograph, it shows the driveway being on this parcel. Because I know that's been a contention, a point of contention, but, you know.
Cannot rely on G I S for parcel lines.
That's true. Yeah, junk in, junk out, right? I understand that, but I'm just saying that on that map, that's what it shows it as. Again, they're working to resolve that. One of the things I think that's really important to understand about what is called illegal housing or non-coded housing, or what was the term you used?
Well, it's illegal or unpermitted, either way. Yep.
Okay, yeah. You know, with the dependent villages or the emergency shelter, whatever, the idea would be, under those ordinances, that you have to build like code structures, right? Little tiny homes or other kinds of things. What happens then is basically those cost $800 to $1,500 a month to rent, right? I mean, our rental market has gone through the roof since COVID and even due to other conditions. So the reason that people live in makeshift housing is because they can't afford $800 to $1,500 a month. They just can't. Along with a standard P G N E bill and all the other things that come with it, a water bill and the rest of it. And so people trying to house themselves are going to create makeshift housing. Now, that might be yurts, it might be tents, it might be buses, it might be cars. I mean, people are living in their cars that are going to school at Cal Poly Humboldt, and they're living in their cars because they can't afford to pay to be in the dorms. There's rooms in the dorms. We've got another couple thousand apartments being built across the street. But, you know, enrollment is not what they thought it would be. So the point is that if we try to do it with the current ordinances we have, the housing that is created is not affordable for these folks or for a lot of people. That's why we have so many homeless camps, frankly, because it's not affordable, you know, to be able to do this. And so we've talked about working on a safe camping ordinance or sanctioned camps. At one point, I thought we did something like that, but maybe I'm mistaken, that we have not done that yet. We haven't created a sanctioned camp ordinance. And frankly, when Devil's Playground was being dissolved, which really spread the homeless population all over the county, we might have been better having people move onto that parking lot at the north end of the mall and had a sanctioned camp there with tents and other things, with maybe a main building, which is kind of what Betty Chin does. People are living in cargo boxes that have been modified. And then they have sort of a central building that's pretty makeshift, frankly, with two-by-fours and some plywood and some stuff over the top where they can have kind of a kitchen area and a common area and stuff. So I think that, you know, we're going to have to think about how we're doing these things because if we're really going to provide housing for a lot of people that simply can't afford $800 to $1,500 a month, we're going to have to work with tents and yurts and other kinds of things somehow. So that's still a missing piece in all this, right? And I get it that, you know, running stove out a window in a bus can be dangerous, you know, it's not to code. But living in the bus is not unhealthy necessarily, frankly speaking. I mean, there's an old tradition of that, frankly, all over this country. But I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, we really don't have the ordinances yet that allow for us to have the kinds of housing that would be affordable for many people, including many of these residents. So how do we solve that? I mean, that's not an easy thing to deal with, frankly, right? So, anyway, I've spoken quite a bit, and I know the chair wants to go to public comment. So thank you for that opportunity to speak again.
And since we mentioned Betty a couple of times, she has running water, she has sanitary services. She has no, you know, I mean, it's a very well-run, she has services, she provides in numerous locations. So when we built the original one, we did use a private property owner who stepped up to allow that on his property until we could find a more permanent situation. And then we placed a situation, when you're talking about this kind of housing, the idea of putting it 35 miles away from services tends to be somewhat problematic. So with that, I don't think any, I can't see where, anytime there's going to be a housing shortage that bad where we throw all the environmental and safety and health standards out the window. And as I was going to say, the same thing that Supervisor Wilson did. It's too late when we do get a waterborne illness or something else. And I mean, it's, and we don't know if there has been. So with that being said, I mean, we just closed down the Elks Club for something fairly. So I'm just going to say, I'll open this to public comment, please.
Hi. I'd just like to kick things off by saying that all of the photos that were on the report are outdated. They're at least several years old. And if there's not been a visit in at least two years, I think it would be quite irresponsible to proceed with anything without further inspecting the site and noting all the progress that has been made. Another thing I would like to say is that there is, there's really, I mean, it's between Yee-Haw and the street. I mean, and as far as, I don't know how safer you think that being out on the street is, but we've really had no major problems in about 40 years. And we have more complaints in the neighborhood of the neighboring Rock Quarry than we do of Yee-Haw. And by the way, that's zoned industrial, and they're planning on turning it into ranchettes. And so as far as, I mean, development goes, I mean, there's plenty of forest land over there. They're planning on developing... I mean, there's plenty of forest land over there. They're planning on developing the whole hillside. And so, as far as, yeah, we, we should be able to live in, in the structures, I think. I have a, a quote, in 2021, piggybacking off of what Madrone said, there is no, sorry. There's, basically what it says is there's no affordable, there's no way to create affordable housing in Humboldt County, particularly in Humboldt County, using all the codes, using, yeah, standard everything. And, yeah, we, we are solving homelessness, houselessness at Yee-Haw, and we have been doing it for 38 years. And we've been doing it better than the county with less money. And I think that speaks for, for a lot. And if you go to the site, you will recognize that we have made progress. We are in compliance by nature of being in the process of compliance. And, yeah, that's about all I have to say. We're, we're in the process of applying for emergency shelter ordinance and tiny home village ordinance, but we're being held up by you guys. And so, we would love to continue the process of cooperation, if you so let us. Thank you.
Chair, can I say one thing?
Sure.
Just to address the public speakers on what he just said about you need to come and see the property before you do anything. That's first on the list. If you look at the item in the staff report, number one is a site inspection to happen within two weeks. And I, you can't respond, I'm sorry. But I just, for the rest of the commenters, maybe grab the staff report and look at the items, and then maybe you can adjust your public comment to that. Thank you.
I've been thinking about politics a lot lately and listening to people, and I've understood that the main thing that separates one politician from another is acting in good faith and not acting in good faith. And so, I'm just, I'm just grateful for you all. I really feel like you're really trying to solve our problems here, so that's great. Okay, if I was going to show you pictures of Yee-Haw, I would not show those pictures that you had here. I would show quite other pictures. And there, it's really a wonderful place. I'm really thrilled to be there. I, I can't imagine that our neighbors are actually complaining, but I can imagine that Mercer Fraser is complaining. When I first moved there, we were talking about, you know, speaking here about Mercer Fraser, and I, I just said, well, people who live in glass houses shouldn't throw stones. And I was all against it and everything. But then realizing what they were doing to our environment and to the children's environment, I realized that we simply couldn't stay quiet. So, if the complaints are coming from Mercer Fraser, I understand that our neighbors need to be protected. But I don't think that a corporation needs to be protected if, if that's where the complaints are coming from. And I, I wouldn't doubt that that's the majority of them, because our neighbors do love us and we love them. Another, another thing, of course, as you all noticed, not only do we shelter the people that are there, but we shelter people, people temporarily, especially like families with children, all the time, people who are being kept safe and not being on the streets, only there temporarily till they can find someplace to go or something to do. But we provide this, and it's taken the, you know, takes the pressure off the county, it gets a few people off the streets, it makes a few people safe that would otherwise be in danger. Send, thank you for the pointing out the compost toilet. That's the one that I use. We also have a porta potty there now, so that's for guests and everything. But the compost toilet that I use is, is a really freaking great design. It's actually way better than a flush toilet, especially in a damp place like, like we live in here. Way better than a septic tank, way better than anything I've ever seen in my life. And I hope if you're going to kick us out, you'll do it in spring or summer, because it would be kind of hard to do in winter. Okay, thank you very much.
So, I have been living at Yee-Haw for about five years now. It was quite a culture shock for my family and I when we first got there. I'm a little nervous. And seeing how this has progressed in the five years that I have been there has been amazing, how people can come together in this and work together for the improvements that we have made. I work as a medical professional in our community here, and I have to say, we have running water. We have helped a lot with waste management. I live in one of the structures, the cabins that has a toilet and a septic system in place. And I know from outside perspective, we look like a bunch of dirty hippies. I have come to absolutely love this community and love my, my cabin and our, my, my commune, my fellow people that I live with here. We have made amazing progress. And when we do this inspection, I am excited to show you how much we have done and tried to grow as a community. When we have people who are here temporarily, I personally have referred them to Betty Chin, because years ago, I actually utilized her program for my, my family. But even Betty Chin fails. This community of Yee-Haw has given my family stability more so than even Betty Chin's or other resources in the community has been able to do. Betty Chin's, you cannot have any animals. I have, we have people from Yee-Haw and Betty Chin's right now where we are housing their animals. My family has had a lot of stability these past five years with Yee-Haw in this crisis, thanks to Charles and this community. My kids normally call, my husband has mental health, and that going to a psychiatric hospital every often, to the point where it was called daddy daycare. My husband hasn't done that in the whole timeframe we have been here because of our stability with this. And I want to see that continue for not just my family, but for others that could use this as a resource. We have made progress, and I hope that we can see those good changes continue.
Could I, could I ask a question? Just real quick. Do you, do you get that for free, or do you pay rent?
Um...
Come to the mic. It's yes or no. Just, do you pay or do you not pay?
We would not be able to afford the $800 to $1,500 that Madrone was saying would cost that. We pay a very minute amount.
You pay. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Norris. I'm a reporter for Kim Kemp, as well as the late, great attorney Eugene Denson's legal assistant before he passed. I've been working on this case for, let's see, a few years now. And I'm here today really saddened that, that not only did that work that Ed and I put so much love and heart into to try to make legal, Yee-Haw legal and up to code with the Teeny House Village Ordinance and the Dependent Unit Dwelling Ordinance, or Village, I believe that's called. Sorry, I forget the acronym. But all of these are emergency housing-based ordinances. Were literally like designed by Ed in large part. And of course, the county did an incredible job as well, pulling through and coming, finishing that after Ed died. But the inspiration was Yee-Haw. The commune in Trinidad that houses about 30 people, I would argue very sustainably, a low impact, incredible water, like you can't find in many places in the city, and great, I would say, two septic tanks. There's a compost toilet that we've had a permit on file for a real long time. I won't go into the details here. I'm just really saddened that there's an allegation in the staff report that says we haven't made progress. In fact, we have made so much progress. I'm not ashamed to say that I live there now. I didn't when I first started covering this case and working on this. But I recently had to move there because I'm a single mom, and the DHHS services that they provide for emergency housing, I sat on a list for over a year, and my son and I were going to have to sleep in our car. And Charles Barth saved us. And we talk about rent paid, average at $200, maybe $300 per unit. We're not talking per person. This is the kind of leg up that people really need in our community. They're not all dirty hippies, that's for sure. There's some really incredible people out there. I really want, I, I went into the Planning and Building Department yesterday to try to apply for that permit or ordinance that just took effect on Friday. I was denied by the Planning and Building Department, but I intend on doing that. And we have been doing everything that Ed and I had been working on before he passed in April. The only difference is that he died. Progress has still been, been made. We own a porta potty now on the land. And all the junk cars are moving, and no, there are not more. I've, I'm personally the one that did the vehicle report, and I can confidently say that there are not more cars than the last time. The definition of junk is debatable, that's like a legal matter. But to make 30 people homeless over these things that can be debated otherwise and peacefully, I believe is unconscionable. Please give us some time.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Sierra. I just want to say first off, I, I don't actually live at Yee-Haw, and I never have. But, but I've been out there many times, and a lot of friends that live there now or lived there in the past and are doing great now, good members of the community. And I just want to address really briefly the, all this fake concern about water quality and outbreaks. You know, I worked with a plumber around here for about 10 years, and I've been all over the county. A lot of work in Trinidad, a lot of work for the neighbors on Quarry Road, some of the other little properties out there. I've never met any of those neighbors that has a problem with Charles, I got to say that. I've never had a, I've never met neighbors out there that have problems with the community. I see Charles going to the grocery store, he knows, everyone loves him in Trinidad. It's like Trinidad's a nice little tight community. I'm actually born and raised in Humboldt, grew up in West Haven when I was younger. And, you know, I've seen all kinds of different situations, you know. I've done plumbing on commercial, residential, all over the place. And like, and I've seen some pretty nasty stuff as a plumber. I deal with nasty stuff all over the place. And I've never seen anything really gross at Charles's place. I just haven't. I've seen like, in Arcata, the clay sewer pipes are leaching into the ground everywhere. I mean, somehow we're not all dead. I don't know how we're not all dead from waterborne illness, but it's like, there's nothing about Charles's place that, in my opinion, having seen all this gross stuff, makes it any kind of more of a concern than any other property anywhere. It's country living, there's some broken-down cars, there's some broken-down cars all over the county. I've been to all kinds of places, out in Fieldbrook, out in, you know, the outskirts of McKinleyville, way out in the hills. And it's, you know, there's nothing really special about Charles's place except for the, the Mercer Fraser people fight him all the time. That's really what it is. But, I mean, besides that, you know, everyone's talking about homelessness, houselessness. I don't live out there personally, but I've struggled with housing insecurity. And all I want to say is that, you know, the saying, it takes all kinds. You know, Betty Chin's doing a great thing, offering people a great opportunity. And that's going to work really well for some people, but not for everybody. And Charles is somebody who's offering some, something else. And, you know, this idea that, oh, we're going to fix something by throwing 30 people out on the street is, I mean, it's just going to create so much problems. I don't know why you'd want to create so many problems. Just, anyway, that's, that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heather Pierce. I'm pretty much going to get up here and say the same things I've said every time. My son was, spent the first nine years of his life in that, in that spot in that, at Yee-Haw, and that was 28 years ago. There has, as you know, not been an outbreak, and I realize we're not waiting for an outbreak. I agree with what the plumber just said, you know? I mean, anyway, that's one thing. And so, I've been pretty involved with Yee-Haw even prior to my son living there for those nine years. And, and at the time I lived there years ago, many of the people that lived there then went on to become, you know, members of society, taxpayers, all that, you know. Some are school administrators, all sorts of like professional people, including myself. I needed that start. I had a baby. I had no way to make the kind of money that real rent is. You know, now is a different story. But like, he's definitely done a lot towards struggling families, especially at the beginning of their, you know, professional lives or what have you, just that, and other things. Like, now is not the time to kick out a bunch of people. Why, why would you want to kick out 30 people that are, you know, just barely making it? They're not going to be safer in Yee-Haw on the street. That's not going to be safer. So, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Hey, I already introduced myself. I'm going to say, there's been some misrepresentation. Those pictures are ancient. They're really ancient. And you know, if I caught you on a bad day, I could take some bad pictures at your house, too. And a lot of those issues, all those, all those nuisances, we addressed them immediately, many of them. Not all of them. Some of them we couldn't address. We're not zoned right. We are not zoned right. And there's other things. But some of them, we addressed immediately, within the 10 days, way back in the day, the original 10 days, and they came out and saw it and still charged us for it. You signed on to that, right? We had that stuff checked off now, and they completely misrepresented it. The hearing, at that hearing officer, was just completely bogus. My attorney was stunned. He never saw anything so poorly done. And, and as far as, we wound up having a settlement agreement back in the day, in '08. And that was, I applied for a permit, and they agreed to settle. We agreed to not sue them. And that was an omnibus permit that included everything. And it was buried, right? And it was completely buried. And when we tried to bring it up, they said, oh, you know, it's been too long. And but we kept going. We kept, we kept persevering. And we've always been working forward and trying to get into agreement. Compliance is a funny word for me, but, you know, people wear their hats and stuff, comply, right? But we're Americans, you know, we're living our lives, and we're trying to move forward. And I actually am your man. I'm not, I'm your man, you know? I can do what you want. I can, you know, and I've been doing it for a long time. This is just a bunch of misrepresentation. And, and my permits get stifled. You know, I, we just applied for the very first day possible for some of those tiny home things and, and got immediately denied. You know, I think that we should use this opportunity as standing here in front of you and you guys listening, and, and the staff here. Your Code Enforcement Officer, Zoeth, didn't want to come out last time we talked in John Ford's office and look at junk vehicles. He was satisfied already. How's that time doing? Oh, I'm running out. Okay. No, I, I think we should use this opportunity to, to move forward. And, and, and you should direct, maybe not, this isn't your exact second, but you should, you should direct staff to start changing zoning so that we can, we can work on this program. Thank you.
Thank you. The property that is, is subject to this meeting provides good low-income housing in a time of housing crisis. It would be harmful to the County of Humboldt to make a perfectly working low-income housing project out of effect. I know the County of Humboldt needs affordable housing. That is a perfect, this is a perfect example of affordable housing. I know that this is, this property has permits that got promised, I think it was back in like 2008 or 2012 or something like that, vanished. And one of the, one of the ways to, to stop this argument is to get permits approved. I know this is an imperfect life. We all have lives to live. Our job is to try to improve our lives and all everyone's life around us. We all make mistakes. I'm here trying to make sure we don't make... I'm here trying to make sure we don't make mistakes that are completely avoidable. I hope this board allows people to live. Thank you for your service to Humboldt County, to the great state of California and to the United States government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lonita Baker and I am born here in Humboldt County, lived here my entire life. My family over the years has experienced homelessness. I am currently homeless myself in Yee Haw because of mental health issues as well as physical health, preventing me from actively searching for work. And currently, my main focus has been on obtaining some sort of income, even if temporarily through disability. So that way there I can focus on starting a business to where if I'm having a bad mental health day, I can take that day off and not have to worry about answering to somebody going, why aren't you coming into work today? In addition to that, in regards to Mercer Fraser, my stepdad used to work for Kernan Construction over a decade ago, he has since passed. And one of his main issues with Mercer Fraser has been the fact that, in his opinion, they were constantly undercutting the prices for things like paving and things like that. And as I said, that is in his personal opinion, but that is all I have to say on that.
Thank you.
I'll go. I, I grew up at Yee Haw when I was younger. I guess I never really lived there, but for all intents and purposes, I grew up there. We spent a lot of time there. And I don't know, I've spent a lot of time out on the streets being homeless, moving around. And I can tell you some stories if you want to hear them, not enough time for them probably. But I haven't felt safe in a long time. And you know, Yee Haw's the only place I can really remember that I can go to and rest and, you know, I can leave my teepee wide open. I don't have to worry about people coming in and taking my stuff. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Reeves. I'm a local business owner here in Humboldt. I've run a retail business here for 15 years. I'm also raising my family here. And it's not easy, it's been, it's been a struggle and even managing to pay thousands of dollars a month in commercial rent, I still struggle with housing my family. We live in a school bus right now on a gravel parking lot and that situation is about to come to an end. And so it's gonna put me and my wife, my two kids out on the street. And you know, Yee Haw has opened their doors to us and been an option for us. And you know, just the mental health that that provides of security of knowing I'll be able to take my family somewhere where we won't be just completely out on the streets, surrounded by strangers with no resources whatsoever. It's invaluable. And at the same time, you're passing emergency housing ordinances, which, you know, it was mentioned 35 miles away is too much. Well, you know, living in a metal container, in a cement slab in the middle of a city is a little too much for my family. You know, you can't ask that, all right? Some of us want to be close to nature, some of us want to drink spring water, some of us, you know, want our children to grow up around trees and not concrete and not addiction. And you know, the, you're looking at a community that has close to a 40-year history. So basically by bringing this up now, you're, you know, it shows some, some kind of deviance inside almost because that place is grandfathered in. By all means, you had 40 years to take action if something was wrong, you know? And they say progress is being made, I'm here to say, you know, I'll do what I can to help. But you know, the, the idea of creating homelessness at an unprecedented time of housing insecurity is preposterous and it's against our community, it's against the spirit of Humboldt and the spirit of America. You know, I strongly urge you to support Yee Haw. Instead of encroaching them and making this difficult, find a way to help them, find them the resources so that they can continue what they're doing. Help them fix the small problems that they have so that you don't exasperate the condition of homelessness in our community. I face crime as a business owner all the time and I know that it's real and I don't want to be out there on the side of the road. And that's gonna be the option you leave me with if you shut them down. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin. I'm a resident of Yee Haw, I've been there a long time. I'd like to point out with all these concerns about public health and safety that I chose to recover from serious injuries and surgeries at Yee Haw versus like the county-run hospitals, I felt more sanitary and safe at Yee Haw. And as a resident of Yee Haw, the one thing that makes me feel not safe is the threat of being evaded, being evicted. And I can't help but feel singled out if code enforcement is willing to spend 60% of its budget doing so, when I can see just driving around town every day, clear examples of actual public health hazards. Yeah, I think it would just be shooting the county in its foot, displacing 30 people with 60% of code enforcement's budget. Doesn't seem like a good use of money either to me. Thank you.
Saying no one else, I'll bring it back to the board.
Chair Bone, I do have callers.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just.
There are several other people sitting who might also like to speak. I remember a March 12th meeting, I was here, you were here, and we were talking about veterans' halls and utilities and you said, instead of talking about all the ways that we can't make it work, we need to figure out how we're gonna make it work. And I wrote that down because I thought that that was important when you said that. And then the board voted to not meet to discuss the item on the agenda that I was there for, which was Ed Denson's proposal for emergency housing, which would have allowed Yee Haw to exist in and of itself, as it is now. And I understand that the county doesn't want to tolerate it like it is now. And I hear Charles saying that he's willing to work with you. And I see Charles working, I see him working very hard. I never knew how hard Charles worked when I lived at Yee Haw, because when I saw him, he would be there, he would be smiling, he would be playing the flute, you know, he would be checking in with people, but I never realized that he works constantly all day long, every day. And he's working very hard. He's worked very hard to clear out an area in front of Mercer Fraser where there were cars parked where they needed to be moved. And the reason all of these cars came in was because he has family and he had a son who needed help and needed a place to put things. And then Mercer Fraser wanted things moved, so he started moving them. But this area that we're discussing, you guys got that email, it doesn't have to be adverse possession, Charles hasn't even filed for that because where the power poles are and where the address is and where the road was when he moved in, which was just winding through piles of gravel. And since then, Mercer Fraser has constructed a berm and codified where the road is, but they did that without a survey. So that's very much in the air. I want to tell you my history. I was homeless with my husband and seven children. We had to move out of our house, we had nowhere to go. I was pregnant with my eighth child, this was in 2014. The county paid Charles last month's rent deposit so that we could move in to the central house, one of the houses on the property which is permitted. At that time in 2014, we paid $400 a month for water, utilities and rent. And that was the most anyone has ever paid there, to my knowledge. I'd like to say more, I don't have time. I wish Charles could say more. He's here because he wants to work on this and he wants his community to continue. His children were born there, my child was born there. We want to see this continue. Please come visit us. You have not been, Madrone has been, Bushnell hasn't come, I don't think Arroyo's come, Wilson, you haven't come. Please come see it for yourself.
Hi, Conny Beck, Health and Human Services Director. As you, your boards are aware, I oversee public health, behavioral health and social services. I have resource cards here, they're on the back table. These are all the resources that are available to anyone needing services from the county. I'd also like to just note that we could set up some time and do maybe a resource fair for the families that are living on the property here to help them. 39 weeks is only nine, a little over nine months, and that's not very long to have to move and find housing and get all your resources together that you need to be able to get into housing. So I'd love for everyone here to take me up on that and grab a resource card and see what we can do about getting some additional housing there.
Thank you. All right, bring it back to.
Chair Bone.
Yes.
We do have three callers on the line.
Okay, perfect.
9277, I'm sorry, caller 9277, star six to unmute and you'll have three minutes.
Hi. Hi, my name is Amanda. I'm a local, interested in human compassion and cares a lot about uplifting this community. I wanted to address a few points. One was the first one about there being income generated and this idea that, you know, that Charles is just raking in all this money and not putting it towards the betterment of the care of people. And that is just not the case. This is a place that provides no, low income and no income housing and really cares and fosters for people. There is progress being made. And I will reiterate a thousand times about the point of being on the street versus being in a shelter, whatever that is. And that decision, it should be an autonomous decision for a person to make whether or not they want to be in a shed or a tent or whatever living establishment that they choose to live in. It puts their personal health and risk at is the thing in question. Not, you know, this whole oversight about what is good and safe for them. They should have that decision and make that. And if they are feeling that it is better than being homeless of the street, which obviously it is, I would say wouldn't be fair, then they should have that. So I encourage you to give them their sovereignty. And the constant harassment of this, this beautiful establishment is an attack against the poor and against homelessness and against, you know, it's a class issue. And I want to go further than just saying we're gonna improve the place. These sanctions are put in place and asked of people without the resources to install them. And so I would say if, you know, you are asking for a poor group of people to spend money to create their living situation to be better, then you should provide the resources for them to do so. So this could be in terms of allowing them their sovereignty, it could be giving them a grant as far as non-for-profit is concerned or any other means of providing them actual resources to help improve the property. And not only this property, but providing resources that attack the bigger issue of no income and low income housing. I want to inform.
Thank you.
Chair Bone, I have two more callers in the queue. I also have Mario on the line, I mean on, with his hand up, Carlson.
Mario.
Mario Galsen. Do you want to take him first or do you want the other caller?
Yeah, let's go ahead and get.
Go ahead, Mario.
Thank you Chair Bone and Board of Supervisors and the public. And my name is Mario Galsen, I'm Director of Environmental Health. I wanted to weigh in a little bit on a couple references to composting toilets and septic systems and catch the board up on a little bit related to what we've received at environmental health. Our office permits septic systems and waterless toilets. We don't currently have any permits, to my knowledge, associated with any onsite wastewater treatment systems, any septic systems. We do have an application that was submitted to our office in 2021 for a waterless toilet system. There are some fundamental problems with this type of application in the general application. Excuse me. The ordinance requires that waterless toilets are appropriate for single-family dwellings, owner-occupied, single-family dwellings, educational facilities and ag, remote ag-type applications. Multiple-family housing is not one of them. Also, we would need to really demonstrate that the property has capacity. We need to identify separation of groundwater and thus far, that has not happened. And so fundamental to any development is to understand the capacity of the property to support the proposed development. And I think that's probably my recommendation as the Environmental Health Director is to make sure we check that box and we understand, is this site suitable for housing multiple families and what sort of soils are on site that can support this type of development? So I definitely appreciate there's a need for housing and there are folks there and that will need housing and support and that cannot be forgotten. However, the long-term approach here has to incorporate the fundamental requirements of development and does it have adequate sewage capacity? Does it have water? This site with 30 folks on it would also require a, would be defined as a public water system and require oversight from this, excuse me. With that, I'm available for questions too. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Madrone?
Thank you Mario, really appreciate you being here to speak to these issues. You know, I've had many conversations with Director Ford about composting toilets and stuff and I've been told that as long as the property has the potential to have a permitted septic system, even if it's not installed, that composting toilets can be allowed. I recognize there is a capacity issue. I've got two residences on my property and my daughter next door had 10 children, so there was 11 people in a single-family house with one bathroom. It was difficult, but they made it work and it has a legal septic system. So I'm not sure what this 30-person thing is. I do know that if you have four or more residences on a water supply, that it becomes a public water supply. So I think that must be what you're referring to versus the 30 people, because you could have 30 people living in three homes, you know, 10 children each or whatever. I also was saying, I've had this conversation with you before about septic systems, just because they become permitted does not mean they're not polluting the groundwater. And I've made this point over and over again about the fact that the way they get permitted is that the end of the leach fields have to be 100 feet from a spring or 100 feet from a creek. But in hydrology, we have this thing called, you know, well, basically, let me just. But in hydrology, we have this thing called, you know, well, basically, let me just keep it simple, in that when it rains in the winter, that line on the map that represents the creek or the dot on the map that represents the spring that has to be a hundred feet away from the leach system, when it rains really heavy like it did this winter, the groundwater expands and that line expands outward and the dot expands outward, so that suddenly what was a hundred feet away from the spring or the stream could be ten feet away or could be literally leaching into the groundwater. And I've provided evidence about how my own neighbor with a legal septic system has been polluting my groundwater and putting fecal coliform into my springs, and I've had the water tested before any of this happened, when it was totally clean, and after the system got put in, it was very polluted. And I've spent thousands of dollars dealing with that issue. So septic systems by themselves, even if permitted, are not God's gift to sanitation. They just are not. Whereas a legally-built composting privy doesn't put anything into the ground, literally. It all gets handled within the small building, especially when it's a little two-story building like the one that was shown in the pictures. It provides a gravity system of turning the pile to where at the end of it, you have a soil product, literally. So I mean, I just think that there would be ways to work with this village in the sense that if we got rid of the barrel privies and had composting privies, and as was mentioned, there are B&amp;B toilets that are serviced regularly, I do think there's a pathway forward to have a good sanitation system that could be permitted and would absolutely provide good sanitation. At some point here, I want to ask Charles to come back up, but first, I just wanted to ask you, Mario, I know, yeah, is there a question here? The question is, do you think there could be a pathway forward for these things? Because you said that there would have to be some testing of the groundwater capacity to handle these things, but with a composting privy, you're not putting anything into the groundwater. So I'm just curious what you're meaning by that, because there are two legal structures, there are two per septic systems on the property. So do you think there could be a pathway forward for composting toilets to replace the barrel privies such that one could have good sanitation?
Thank you, Supervisor Madrone. A couple different things there, starting with the water and then circling back to the composting toilet idea. Title 22, Section 64215 identifies, defines what a public water system, and that's going to include, yes, four connections or more, but also additionally, a transient non-community, I think it's called, is when any water system serves twenty-five or more people within any sixty-day period, that system also must meet requirements and have oversight from the state water board. The septic issue, regardless whether it's with, if there are pre-existing structures that predated the ordinance related to septic permitting, essentially those structures would be legal nonconforming, essentially grandfathered in, some folks call it, excuse If these structures need to be permitted retroactively, then they would need to meet current code in our local area management program and the Regulation and Technical Manual, which was a supplement to that lamp, as some folks call it. Waterless toilets likewise, just like septic systems, need to make sure that they meet vertical separation to groundwater. Three feet is a minimum underneath any end disposal of the end product from waterless toilets or composting toilets. And in demonstration that there has been adequate pathogen reduction. Now, this is getting a little bit too technical, and I hate to go down the rabbit hole of technical discussion when we're talking about what strategies are for this development, because it really gets back to the ordinance. But the systems, composting toilets need aeration. You got to turn them over. You got to maintain optimal temperatures such that you can kill pathogens like Giardia, Cryptosporidium, D-nature proteins, and really treat viruses adequately. So just because there haven't been communicated health impacts doesn't mean folks are not experiencing that. We also understand that everything goes downstream. When there's large rain events, depending on the design, now, I haven't personally assessed the design, so I'm not, I can't speak firsthand about the adequacy of design, and I'm happy to come out if that's what's going to happen next.
Bottom line, there is no permitted septic or any type of wastewater system there at all, is basically what we started with, right?
Yeah.
And you can't permit it here today, right now.
No, sir.
But Chair, if I might, Mario, as you mentioned, septic systems that might have been installed previous to a certain date could be legal nonconforming. That's, I think, what we're dealing with, with these two houses and the systems that are there. But again, that would all have to be validated, but that was a possible pathway forward. The existing composting privy, one would have to determine whether or not the water table underneath that privy was three feet or lower, so the separation existed, and that it was designed to allow for the turning. And as I said, you know, the modern design for these things provides for gravity to actually turn the material over time. They're really quite wonderful. But anyway, thank you very much, Mario, for your feedback. As I heard it, there are pathways forward, but there are requirements that would have to be met to be able to meet those things, but there certainly is a pathway. Yes, it requires a lot of things to come into compliance, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Nikki.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Caller seven-one-zero-eight, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. This is Bonnie Blackberry from Southern Humboldt, and I support Yee-Haw and what they're doing and would hope that the county could help as much as possible because they're providing a community service for people that need it. And if we talk about substandard housing that the county can't allow, then, well, how about all the homeless people down here? We've got them living out in the woods. And as far as substandard housing, we've had, we just had a fire a week or so ago from these camps, and Yee-Haw provides a safe place. There haven't been fires and accidents and all these health issues. And I just think people are a lot better up there than parked on the side of the street or out in the woods. I would think it'd be more concerning about that and the impact that that's having. I support Supervisor Madrone's suggestions, and I'm disappointed that this happened using old information, photographs, instead of current, so you could see what the current status is. So I just don't think there's anywhere that all these people could be moved to to provide the same kind of safety and affordability. Yeah, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Chair Bone, we actually have no more callers.
All right.
We have one more speaker.
All right.
Hello, thank you. My name is Greg Bonagira. I'm a registered nurse here, and I work for the county. I'm very honored to be able to serve this community. I just want to go on the record saying I support these folks in Yee-Haw. What they're doing is good work, and I think if there is a pathway for our county to help them get into compliance and so they can keep living there and as they have been for forty years, you know, would really be amazing. You know, I think Humboldt County is a place that values diversity and equity and inclusion, and as a county employee, I take a lot of those trainings. And I think these folks are living in a way that is really beautiful, really beautiful, and in harmony with the land. And I know that they care as much about, you know, the environmental impacts of their project as you all do, and I think working together with a path forward is, would be great. So thank you for your time. I'm on my lunch break, so I'm going to head back to work, but thank you all.
All right, thank you. Okay. CNN, I'll bring it back to Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. Thank you for all the public comment, and I think that one thing that came across to me is, you know, you're fearful of losing your home and not having a place that you feel safe and secure in, and I can recognize that and feel compassion for that. I think where I feel for you folks is that your landowner, while he may only receive $400 as a maximum of rents, has had an opportunity to update your facilities and your homes so that this wouldn't have gotten to this point. So all of you that live there and, you know, could be, if progress has, could be shown, and I think we're going to do an inspection, and so that will help, update the Planning and Building Department. But, you know, to the landowner, please, you know, these folks are really depending on you, and so if you have an opportunity to maybe work a little faster, if you bought a church in Trinidad, then maybe you could have used that money to update this facility where people are living. As far as my thoughts to the Planning Department, you know, I think you need to do an inspection that's current, obviously, and you have that down there. I think good effort from the landowner would be the $17,000 that's outstanding, that the department is out for work, if he could come up with that and, you know, show good faith that that's been owed for a long time. I think weekly updates from him or communication would be great for you guys after you do that final, that first inspection, to make sure progress is happening. It sounds like there's one B-to-B toilet, or, you know, portable toilet there, and so I think that it would be great, there seemed, if there are still barrels of human waste there, you know, those folks can pump that and you can clean those barrels out. That would be great. That stuff sitting around is not healthy, and so you have them coming, I'm assuming, to pump that one B-to-B, maybe get an additional one or a couple additional ones, and then have them clean up that human waste. That would be great. And then I think monthly updates and pictures that progress is happening with receipts as far as those vehicles being removed out of there. And I see a lot of that is already on your guys' schedule to work with that landowner. I don't think it's the wish of anyone or the Planning Department to have people homeless or to remove people, but effort has to be shown, and so I would look forward to having a report back, you know, on what the progress is, if there is any. And the structures, you know, they're not up to code, and so you definitely have to move forward to try to get those within something that is inhabitable. And I know you're going to struggle with this, but this is just like what I feel, I want to recognize what Bonnie Blackberry said about the houseless situation in Southern Humboldt, where we just had a large fire in, well, a large, three acres on the edge of Redway, and it's on a property that has five homeless camps on it. And it is private property, but the community is responsible as much as the landowner. Landowner is really, it's really hard to, you can't fence out people. They're going to cut the fences, and so if we remove those people, they're going to be on the downtown streets. And, you know, DHHS through Redwood World has really tried to help relocate people, but you can't force them. And so, you know, I feel for the people that live here, but also recognize that there needs to be great strides by the landowner to improve those conditions, and I see that you want to make a comment.
I do, because one of the things that's at the heart of this, unfortunately, a lot of these things are peripheral issues. The heart of this is multifamily residential is not allowed in this zone.
So is there, and it would have to be an application by the landowner, and the abatements would have to be cleared up before that could probably move forward, but you did say it could be rezoned?
That is going to be a policy issue that the board will confront. I understand that a representative for the property owner is going to apply for the General Plan Amendment and the rezon. We will bring that, that's first, a petition. The board then needs to respond to that petition, say, yep, go ahead and process that, and then really it gets down to if we change the zoning. So that's the first step. Then the second step is what would an emergency housing village here look like?
I recognize that as well. I guess my preference is that, you know, the pictures, if they're old, okay, those conditions are not okay, really, and if there is better conditions now, then great for you guys. And I think that the Planning Department will recognize that on their inspection. However, it's not any different than any other place that's been abated, and it's not just county laws, it's state laws. And so, you know, moving forward and trying to work within that, and obviously, it has to be rezoned, but effort has to be shown on, by the landowner. Also, the last thing I would like to say is that, you know, you assume that it's Mercer Fraser, and you all make complaints against him, you think he makes complaints against you, he's your neighbor as well. So whether it is or isn't, you said you get along with all your neighbors, and I don't think that's a true statement, because there's been critical statements made by y'all to, about him. He never has been here and complained about you guys, and possibly he has, I don't know. You know, we don't know that, but he also lives there or has his, you know, his work there. So if you're going to try to get along with your neighbors, he's one of them as well. And so, no, you can't. Sorry, but I'm just, it's my turn. And I just want to say, you know, that trying to work with everyone there is important. So those are kind of my feelings, but the human waste portion of it, if there are barrels, have the B-to-B people come and clean those up. They'll pump them. It costs you a little bit of money, but that's super important.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you, Chair Bone. Couple things. First, I just want to speak to the public coming here today, and I want to really thank them for their experiential and, experiential and heartfelt, authentic expressions to us and of their situation, their opinions about this situation. I want to say it's brave. It's really brave, honestly. This construct of how we speak this way is just really weird. It's just, it's a longstanding tradition that I don't know where it came from, but this is how it works, and I don't have the manifestation to change it in this moment. But I want to speak to the, you know, to speak to this, and you're right, there are some clash, class issues here, right? We're landed people. We own the properties we live on. Many people do not, right? And so that is definitely real in these, in this situation, and to speak to us in times when people are precarious in their lives and whatever they may be, and also fearful of those things, and some of, you know, to speak those truths here in this arena in a very public space, it takes just a lot, it takes a lot, and not everyone can do it. And I want to just acknowledge that it's very, very difficult for many people. So I just want to, like, put that out there and thank you for taking not just the time, but really the, you know, the emotion and the space to do that. I do want to reference a couple things in this discussion and in terms of, and I want to go to sort of a public health element of this that wasn't mentioned. You know, pathogens are not just passed through water quality issues in terms of groundwater. Really, when we have outbreaks, it's actually all above ground. It's in communal living spaces where sanitation isn't just about where- It's in communal living spaces where sanitation isn't just about where waste goes, but literally how it's handled, and having the ability for people to wash themselves before and after, go to the bathroom, and cooking, and all those kinds of things, that actually, this is where we get our outbreaks, they really, really, that occur. Hepatitis is on that list, we've had that here in Humboldt County before, from composting toilets, and privies, and so, other things like this. So, we've had these issues, they're real. They're not something that, and as Director Calson mentioned, many of that's, much of that is unreported. We don't know necessarily, we get sick, and then they just get sick, and they don't necessarily report that. So, I just want to, and it's also not just about the person, it's about the community beyond that, because a sick person does not just stay at home typically, they go out into the community. And so, we have issues around that, and this is one of those spaces. And this is not the only place, and I want to acknowledge that it's at all levels, and we don't want to spread that around by making people more unhoused than they already are. So, I think that's real. I want to thank you guys for a little, getting a little more information on sort of the income issues, in terms of the landowner, although it's not very complete, but it gives us some context at least. I still think, I concur with, and I still believe that the landowner has a big part to play in this. The landowner is, is, has been, has been described in many ways as a victim in this, and I just don't see it that way. I see that the folks needing a place to live are the folks that are, that we really have, need to have the most concern for in this. We do, and, but in that construct, in that context, I mean, we have all these rules, laws, regulations, and zones, all that stuff, to basically manifest a healthier and better society, with some exceptions that do occur occasionally. And I'm not proposing this be one of them necessarily, but I want to get to a question of capacity. Because I think one of the issues that we see on these sites, and one of the things that sort of manifests neighbor complaints sometimes, is when people do things, I always have the use of this term, it's all cool till it's not. People are doing things on their land and on their properties, and, you know, no one says anything about it, because either no one can see it, they can't smell it, there's, whatever it may be, and they don't feel impacted in those other ways. And a lot of times, it comes to the capacity of that parcel or that property to do the things that this landowner is having done on the space. And so, in this case, there's, what we hear is thirty people. A question, how many units? Do we know how many, do we have a guesstimate of how many units that that, those thirty residents, or even that's an estimate, I mean, I'm just, we're just taking this idea that there's thirty people there, but how many separate units do we imagine that they're there, or do we estimate?
Thirteen.
Fifteen structures, eighteen shelters.
Fifteen structures, two thousand and eighteen.
Oh, fifteen, sorry, fifteen structures in two thousand and eighteen.
So, fifteen structures in two thousand and eighteen, so averaging two people per structure, more or less? And does a structure include these, like, buses? Is that a structure, you consider that a structure in this context?
I would defer back to the pictures.
Okay.
Probably wood frame structures, but those were fifteen wood frame structures were inspected by.
Are you on your mic? I need you on the record, please. Thank you.
Sorry about that. In two thousand and eighteen, there were fifteen wood frame structures that were inspected by a building inspector.
Okay, but we also had photographs of what we believe to be people living in vehicles too. And by that, I mean the buses and stuff like that.
That's correct.
And so, that's in addition to the fifteen. And how many acres again is this parcel?
Don't have precise answers.
We don't, okay. Twenty acres, well, I, we don't know right off the top, right? But what I'm getting at is like, is under the current entitlement, right there, under a three acre, we have our two acre.
Three acre conversion?
Curdle, curdle.
The two acre curdle, yes.
Yeah, two acre curdle, that you could have a main structure of virtually any size, I feel like it seems like these days, and a ADU, and even a JADU as part of that as well. So, you almost, you have like, three potential residences just by the existing entitlement now. So, I'm just, that, and again, as was mentioned here, you could, as Supervisor Madrona mentioned, you could have a lot of people, and that, even in that construct. I would say that, it's some, I mean, when is it too many people? That's, again, has to do with capacity. So, we're talking about thirty people there now. If there was fifty people, or if there was ten people, there'd be differences in sort of that capacity and impact. And I think that's something that the landowner and the folks that are, you know, engaged in this project, as I've heard it called, really probably should be thinking about, because no matter what process we go through, those, ultimately, it's going to be the capacity of this piece of property to, to, to house without, without, without significant impact. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're always gonna get to. And there is significant impact today, as much as people don't, as much as people say that, no, there's none. And there's also some, I guess, you know, you would imagine, there's some positive impacts of people, you know, having shelter, which is also meaningful. I think that the, in my, I think that the staff has a good plan to move forward. I hear what the Director of DHHS says about sort of the timeline, if this really does mean people in the, even if this project is moving, or this, whatever, is moving forward to transition to a healthier, more, more compliant, more, you know, just in established space for this, there's gonna be some transition in that. And I would, I would hope that we work with DHHS, and if we need to modify some timelines in order to help with that, I think that's reasonable. And, and I do appreciate that we've heard from folks that much of this can be, and has been transitional for them, in terms of like, moving on to other spaces and places in their lives, and I think that that's reasonable. So, what that tells me is that this, you know, maybe isn't a forever place for everybody, but at the same time, it provides some value in the current context. That being said, we have to be fair in a lot of ways. There has to be equitable enforcement. And if we don't take seriously our codes and all those other things, then how do we do that for everybody else too? And then also, of course, as you mentioned, the liabilities around this. I mean, we have, we have an obligation under our code and under our responsibilities, and in balance with all those things. So, I take what you guys are saying today, all I'm asking is that we think about our interface with DHHS a bit more on this. And I'm looking forward to hearing what either, or whatever the next report is gonna be. I think, I think that'll be very telling in terms of things. And I really do encourage the property owner to take seriously that this is, this is moving forward, and so, in some way, shape, or form. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, I mean, in order to get help, you have to want to receive help. I think that's gonna be really important in this. That's all I got to say for now. I thank everybody for this discussion.
I think, well, Supervisor Madrona has the distinct honor of being the first supervisor from the fifth district that's actually worked on this, all the way back to Paul Kirk. And so, which means it goes all the way back to two thousand and one. And reading everything in here, I mean, I heard he went and got, tried to get a permit Tuesday for something that became legal Friday, and the property doesn't, I'm having, I'm perfectly fine with the schedule that you guys have come up with. And what I'm hoping is, what I'm hearing is, everything has changed immensely up there. These are old photos, none of it is, represents what is there now. It sounds like most of the vehicles are gone, they have toilets, and everything is fine. And I think what's gonna happen is, you're gonna go up there and do your inspection within the next two weeks, and things are gonna be completely changed. And, you know, the structures, we've talked about a composting toilet that we don't even know is legal. We saw a two-story thing that they were going to have. But the issue being is, it has to be related to a permitted structure. And from what I understand, and then we say, well, maybe a lot of this stuff's really old, well, none of them are permitted, nor are their permits on file. We, even our health, Department of Health, our Health Director even, Environmental Health Director had to call in to verify what was going on. And there are so much more than going on, and we hear thirty people, we haven't verified thirty, I, some people got, said they have kids there and everything else. So, you have fifteen wooden structures, two houses. Are the houses permitted?
There's no record of permits on the houses.
Okay. So, and, so, we have those, and then we have the vehicles, and we saw five or six that had wood stoves coming out, looked like coming out of them or some sort of. So, in turn, I think I'm fine with the progress you're making now, and, because we're talking twenty-four years. We're talking twenty-four years, and I believe it's with the same property owner. And if, isn't there something about doing the same thing over and over again, and getting the same result? Hopefully, he has cleaned up the property, put the money in there, and, and at the same time, is gonna move some of them, or work with them through the church, and, since it's been brought up a few times. I don't, the neighbor, the complaints are not coming from one neighbor, they're coming from multiple neighbors?
I'm aware of two sources of complaints.
Okay. So, I just think as we move forward, I'm fine with the schedule that's on here, because I don't need anything brought back forth, because I've heard it three or four times up here since I've been here, and it's two thousand and one, two thousand and seven, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two. Here we are again today. But it sounds like since then, since twenty-two forward, they've had two years, and they've made great progress. I think what we do is, we go up there and take pictures, current pictures, and, I mean, you can give us a status report, if it's so miraculous that we need to look at rescinding orders, maybe that's what we do, or else we just keep moving forward.
So, if I could summarize what I'm hearing, is that there's a general consensus to continue on the path that we're on with the opportunity for an off-ramp. And that off-ramp would be that an application is filed, and meanwhile, the property is getting cleaned up, the junk is gone, the vehicles are gone. And if there's actual demonstrable progress being demonstrated through that, then perhaps we can take our foot off the gas on the plan we presented today. But if there's not progress being made, and if things are not moving ahead, then we will stay on path to, towards removing everything from the site that's not legal.
And the other thing I'd like to make sure is, as Supervisor Wilson mentioned, I never heard B and B, I heard there was a portable toilet up there, I don't know who's or by or anything else. But the other thing is, I, again, they're rated to only serve ten people a week unless they're being served, you know, more than, serviced more than once a week. The other thing is, I'd like to make sure it has a hand washing station too, since that's where the transfer will most likely take place. So, Supervisor Madrona?
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate the discussion, and as Supervisor Wilson said, I think we all appreciate members of the public here, whether you've lived at Yehaw or are aware of it and support it. I wanted to ask Charles to come back up, because earlier in the discussion, if you could, Charles, Director Ford, you said that what you really want to hear is from the landowner, a commitment, you know, to doing things, to really move forward. And I appreciate that you talked about an off-ramp here, but Charles, could you please come back up? I just want to try and clarify a few things, and get you to speak to that commitment, because as is expressed here, you know, timelines are running, and it's important to know that there's a commitment to moving forward. And I want to thank you for the progress that has been made. I think many of your residents have really dug in and helped a lot with that. And I know you don't charge much rent, it really is not a moneymaker for you, it's really been a labor of love to a large degree. But at any rate, you know, these nine or ten violations that were on the original list from, what was that, twenty sixteen, seventeen, something like that?
Two thousand and one.
Well, originally, there was two thousand and one, but it's the same list, yeah.
It's the same list.
Same list. So, I just wanted to go through those very quickly and get your response to them. So...
Can I first say that we have a permitted septic at the central house, and we have existing non-conforming at the old house? And I don't know what Mario was talking about, his people have been out there, we tested for other leach fields, that all passed. We got a, what do they call it, a dispersal field tested during the wet season, it did get water to five feet, that's what they required. They've been out there, I don't know what he's talking about.
So, I appreciate it, I don't want to debate it. What I want to do, and you can bring that information forward, and provide it to Planning and Building to back up, you know, what you're saying. And I know you've got documents, I see Nicole's been, you know, going through her large file there to dig up that particular information to show that there is evidence of those things. So, I think that's great. So, I just want to go down through the list, one at a time, and just get some recognition or commitment to these things. So, junk vehicles, as I understand it, I mean, to many of us, a bunch of vehicles might look like junk, but if it's driving, you know, if it can move on its own power, not being pushed, but it can start and move, doesn't have to be registered, because it could be under non-operating, et cetera, but if it will move, it's not a junk vehicle, is that correct?
That's our definition, yes.
Okay. So, given that definition, are you committed to anything that doesn't move under its own power to getting it hauled away off the property? Yes or no? Just a yes or no, please?
Definition of a junk vehicle...
Is that it has to move under its own power, are you committed?
Or you have to be making it to move under its own power.
You could be working on it, but there has to be serious progress being made on that, and that's, we get into gray areas there, and working on it for a year or two doesn't work, right? I mean, if you're working on it...
I have my grandfather's nineteen forty Ford pickup truck.
I understand.
It's in a shed. I don't think they're giving me shit about it.
No, so, I don't think that was ever included, I think that's considered to be a vehicle that's being restored. And you could make that argument because of the vintage and the rest of it. But the point is, there are vehicle, if there are vehicles that are not that car in that two-story building...
Yes, yes, we don't want that.
Okay, so, I'm hearing a yes on that, okay? And are there vehicles that might meet that standard of not operating, and you do need to remove them? Yes or no? Just trying to keep it simple, we got a lot to go through.
Yes.
Thank you. Sewage, so, on that, you just mentioned that you have proof about the permitting of things. And if I heard Mario correctly, if it doesn't meet the standards, are you willing, like, with the compost privy that you have, or you want to build, it sounds to me like you need to dig a test pit at the right time, probably during the wet weather season opening, to be able to determine what the groundwater level is at the location of the existing compost privy?
We've already documented that.
Okay.
They were there.
Okay, so if you've got documentation of the one that exists, and if you were proposing other ones, which I recommend in terms of replacing the barrel toilets, and I think Supervisor Bushnell's correct, you ought to pump all those barrels out and be done with that. I appreciate you have the one toilet that you own, and I believe it's what, B and B that comes and pumps that?
That's correct.
Yeah, and so, if you need two of those, and you need a hand washing station, are you committed to doing that in the interim, while you work on...
I've never accepted the non-hand washing thing.
Okay, okay.
Didn't seem smart to me to not have it.
I agree, and as I've stated many, many times, a septic system on its own doesn't necessarily mean things are sanitary. I've had many issues with that. Building codes, are there still fifteen wooden structures on the property?
There never were.
I didn't think there were, I've only seen maybe four or five.
It's more like eight.
Okay, about eight, okay. So, are those up to code?
The owner built a code, I applied for a permit for it, they should've all been up to code, but my permit got buried.
Okay, but the question, I mean, whether or not you had the permit, or being up to code is important for the wooden structures?
Yeah.
So, are you committed to making them up to code?
Yes.
Okay. And that includes wiring, structural components, handrails on stairways, things like that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Recreational vehicle use, I've talked with John quite a bit... Okay, very good. Recreational vehicle use. I've talked with John quite a bit about this because we're seeing a lot of this. I mean, there's streets in McKinneyville, not in the hinterlands, but McKinneyville, where extension cords are running across the sidewalks to RV vehicles that people are having a hard time finding housing. And I very much want to encourage us to continue to move forward with an ordinance, a camping ordinance that can allow for shorter term, I don't know what that is, we've talked about that, to allow for living in a RV and/or a tent and/or a yurt or things like that. But we don't have that ordinance right now, but we could work on that. And from my perspective, I'm not the board, I'm just one member, but you were giving us your feedback and what you've heard. What you hear from me is, I hope we can move forward on working on that ordinance. On the water supply, I think you heard clearly that, I think it's clear that you have more than four units, and at times more than 26 people. So, would you be committed to meeting the requirements of a public water supply? And as I understand it, that might be something as simple as having a UV system or a chlorination system. I prefer UV. I don't like chlorine in my spring water. I appreciate what you're all saying about the beauty of that water because you don't have anybody above you. There are no homes. There's no septic systems. There's nothing above you where your water comes from that flows to your water supply.
Our well is capped for the first 15 feet.
Yeah. And you're lucky in that way. I don't have that benefit being in a neighborhood. But, so, but you probably, do you currently UV or chlorinate?
No.
It's just the raw water from the well, which is probably totally good. But by law, with the number of units and people, are you committed, if you need to, to do the requirements for a public water supply?
If it makes the government happy, I'll do it.
And that might be as simple as a UV system that has a maintenance person that's qualified to make sure that it's tested. There's some testing requirements, I believe, with a public water supply. I forget if it's quarterly or annually. It's not every day. But there's some requirements there. And I hear you're committed to doing that if necessary.
Well, I'm hoping for an even playing field. Like, if I put out my energy and I get it turned back on me...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to level the playing field for you. And it's going to take some commitment to these things that will make sure that all of your residents can continue to have their homes. And this is your responsibility. They're going to help you. They always have. The next one is the junkyard. And I know junk to one person is not junk to another. And I know you, Charles. I know that you have a hard time throwing anything away because it's all got a purpose somewhere, somehow. But I think you know what we mean when, and with the visit that's going to happen, they will tell you what they think, is junk or not. And so, I know you've done a lot of work. I'm talking to Nicole yesterday and others. There's been a lot of progress in trying to remove the junk. To some people, that display on the last slide with the toilets would be junk. To you guys, it's art. It's sculptural art. And I get that. And they're not being used as a toilet. It's a sculpture, you know? So, there is a lot of personal, we see things differently, you know, as human beings. But, so the junkyard issue, solid waste, those kind of are in the same category there in a way that, you know, these things have to be cleaned up and dealt with. I've heard that you got rid of the bike shed that was filled to the ceiling with rusted old bike parts. And I commend you. You used to get all these bike parts to build bikes and take them down to Guatemala?
Mexico.
To Mexico, for the kids and poor families and stuff there. But you clean that shed up. So, good, good for you on that. Health and safety, I mean, that all comes back to all of these things, right? So, if I'm not mistaken, what I'm hearing you say is that you're committed to making these things happen. Lastly, I want to say to Supervisor Bushnell, I want to thank her for her empathy and kindness in regards to the property there on North Redway. She bought and brought in a bunch of fire extinguishers, for instance, to deal with that sometimes the campfires that people are building to stay warm, to cook food, get out of control like the other day. And she has, at her own expense, brought in fire extinguishers and other kinds of things. Thank you Supervisor Bushnell for that. And she talked about the fees and the fines and the rest of it. In my world, my direction, not a vote by the board, but just me, would be that I think you need to pay the fees that have been accumulated due to staff time that has been spent on all this. And it currently was about 17 grand. It's higher than that, I've heard. Maybe it's 20 grand, 23 grand now. But I think you really should pay that to show a good effort. But in regards to the $45,000 in fines and penalties, that didn't cost us anything. That's the fees. And I wish that that money would go into doing the things that we've just talked about here on the property. But that's just me as one vote up here. So, that's my list. I want to thank you, Charles, for coming up and answering that. I don't know if any of the other board members have a question. Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just think, too, one of the big issues is the zoning. So, Director Ford, you know, I think you've heard a lot here, and you outlined how you're going to move forward, which I think is accomplishing what everybody seems to want. But how do you guys address the zoning issue? You have to bring ordinance back to the board.
We'll bring a petition back to the board, assuming that that gets filed here. It's going to be filed today. Or at least the pre-app for it will be filed today. We'll give this middle requirements on that. I would expect it to be filed within a couple of weeks. And then we will bring it back to the board as fast as we can. And at that time, we will bring a progress report and a report of the inspection back to the board. And you can make a decision on the petition in light of the...
Progress.
Progress that's been made.
So, could I ask one clarifying question? Can, statutorily, I guess, can a petition like that move forward with issues, abatement issues on the property? Or is it supposed to be cleared before?
They're supposed to be cleared.
Okay.
Sometimes there have been...
Well, maybe it can happen hand in hand, you know? And that would be my hope. Thank you. Thank you for the update. Thank you again to the community. And, you know, I just am very sympathetic to the people that live there and that, you know, hopefully your landowner will accomplish these things and move in the right direction.
Supervisor Wilson?
Just a clarifying question on the petition. Any land use change is going to require SEQA analysis. And so I just want to be really, let everyone understand that that's a, you know, it's an environmental review. So, it's not just about...
Right.
Yeah, so just be ready. And speaks to this issue, which I brought up before, which is around capacity. There's a lot of, there's, so, yeah, just wanted to make sure that was very transparent in that regard. And I'm happy to make the motion to file or receive and file this report. And, yeah, that's...
Second.
Thanks.
Okay. If we're going to file and accept this report, then they go on just as this report states. Because otherwise, we're looking at changing the rules for septic building, electrical, solid waste, antique junk vehicles, sculptures, art. I'm just trying to see because, and it has nothing against the community, but I mean, 140 people out of Devil's Playground. We had, we had 40 people taken out of the corner of Eighth and H, plus numerous other things. This happens. But, and I don't think any of these were as old as 2001. And we have not had what I would consider cooperation, probably just the result, all the permits he's filed, we've lost or thrown away, I heard. I, because this is going to come up a lot on a lot of other places that are getting a lot of complaints on abatement. And if we're going to do a 23-year abatement process on everybody, I can see where code enforcement isn't going to be in too big a hurry to do anything because they have done everything. What I would like to see is go out and take some pictures comparable to the '22 pictures, with those in '22, and actually see what has progressed and not progressed. Because the progression since 2001 has gotten worse, it seems. And, I mean, I understand, I, but you have, you have a plan in place that I'm perfectly fine with. And if you think I'm going to feel bad about it, Charles, in 2001, you had an opportunity to fix this. And there's been a lot of opportunities to fix this. And what I saw in the 2022 pictures, there were wooden structures without walls on some of them. I mean, there's, there's no railings on the second floor. I'm talking serious stuff. And, and we're sitting here saying, well, that's okay. We made those rules for everybody else. So, I just think what our code enforcement has brought forward has been brought forward out of frustration. And they're asking us, can we move forward? And now, and in all honesty, from what I've heard today, from the occupants and everything else, everything has changed. So, we may get code enforcement out there, and everything has changed. They've made a 50% improvement. If that's the case, I'm willing to give them a couple of months to do another 50% improvement and start doing things. But the other thing is, we don't know if PG&E will run power to there for that many units. That's the other factor.
There's already power there.
Boy, I fully understand. There's power everywhere. But is there power legally being used? So, I'm just saying, there's a lot to be checked out. And it's, and I applaud Supervisor Madron for giving, working with Charles. But the problem is, they, he needs to work with code enforcement. And I think for us to take the tools that code enforcement has completely out of their hands and decide, and I could see this if this was a 2022 case. This is 2001, and it's the same stuff. And it's an environmental issue. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just want to clarify with our motion that you're going to continue on your path with the list as you have it lined out, which is first do an inspection and so forth and so on. And is that correct, Director Ford and Dean?
That is correct.
Okay. So, so we're really not, so the motion is that you've heard us, you've heard the community, and really, it's going to fall on the landowner to, to follow through. But that you'll start the process with, it looks like, within two weeks and do an inspection. And then it gives you 39 weeks, it gives him 39 weeks to accomplish what is outlined. Is that correct?
Well, less than that.
Well, it says 39 weeks from the start, so...
Right. The, right. Ideally, this would be cleaned up and done in 39 weeks.
Okay. So, I just want to clarify that that's what our motion is stating, is that we're really, like, you hear us, but we're going to continue forward supporting code enforcement and help, hopefully, help, be helpful with the landowner to accomplish this in this timeframe. Is that correct?
Well, what it really would be is that there's an off-ramp because there's a different path that can be followed involving modifying the zoning. There's another one, too, that Supervisor Wilson brought up. If they could live within the, we need to check the size of the parcel, but a primary unit, accessory dwelling unit, JADU. If the parcel's large enough, you can have two primary units, two ADUs, two JEDUs, which would get to six units. That's not what they've got now, but that wouldn't require rezoning.
Okay.
So, we'll be talking to them about what their options are.
Okay.
And if it results in a, an application for a rezone, we'll be bringing back a status report with the petition.
Do we need to add that to the musher maker?
That, it'd be good to clarify that if that's part of the motion, yes.
Can you tell me what you want me to say there?
I would say that you have received the report and approved the report with the caveat that if the property owner makes substantial progress towards removing the junk from the site and demonstrates a desire to address the violations and is pursuing a rezone, general plan amendment, that there could be a deviation in timeframe identified to abatement. And it could result in something, a different action.
Nick, did you get all that?
Can you email that to Nikki?
I will. I will. Be glad to give Nikki something.
And I would add the word substantial.
Far more articulate, yeah.
I would add the word substantial in terms of, in terms of the progress. Anywhere that says progress, substantial progress.
Yes.
And then motion, the seconders, okay with that? Also, I wanted to just address, you had said, hopefully, that we don't get kicked out in the winter. And 39 weeks is not the winner. So, it's, it really is giving y'all some time. And, you know, you have a village there, and a lot of work can happen with many hands. So, not only just the property owner, but helping him. So, you know, there's things to accomplish. And I know Nikki will lead the charge. So, thank you, John, for clarifying.
Final comment?
What?
Final comment?
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair Bone. If I'm not mistaken, back in 2001, the population at Yee-Haw was more like 55 to 65 people. There was a lot more buses. There was a higher concentration of people living there. And it could be pointed out that actually you reduced that population by half in that 20 years. Not that we don't have issues and problems. We've gone all over that. I'm not going to go over them again. But my memory of when Niva Holliday lived there, and her family, and a lot of other people, there was a larger population of people there at that time. Lastly, I want to thank staff. This is never easy. You guys take on yeoman, yeowomen's work, and I appreciate it tremendously. And I appreciate that as a board, we've listened, tried to think about how we don't just put a bunch more people out on the street. But again, it takes a lot of commitment. We've got a timeline that's moving, and I look forward to working with you to help in whatever way we all can to make that happen. But thank you, John. And thank you, staff, for your efforts. Very appreciated.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
You ready? Okay. Chair Bone, I'll start with you.
Yes. Is there a sunset on this? I mean, I know we have 39 weeks, but you talked about running across something off-ramps and everything else. I'm just looking at people's kids being up here in 2064 going, God, they dealt with this in 2024.
So, if we do not have a petition, and I would offer this as an amendment to the motion, if we do not have a petition to bring back to the board by the end of 2024, we will bring back a progress report on the status of the abatement.
I'd appreciate that because I'm just, I'm just saying, now that we've had this talk, we're not buying time. We're lighting a fire underneath, getting it done. I just, this is, I don't care, I don't know what, having 60 or 40, or, we don't, we don't know how many people live there now. So, I'm just saying, and it's nothing against these people. It's just there are, there are people that are concerned about this. And it's in complete violation of everything across the board. We've got written, building, planning, sewer, water, everything. And we're saying, you can fix it. It's not a problem. But it hasn't been done in 24 years. So, I just, I need to see this actually happen. Otherwise, we can appreciate staff all we want, but what we're doing to staff is just taking the tools out of their tool belt.
The motion accepts the friendly amendment, which I believe has been recorded by Nikki.
Yes. The seconders, fine. Okay, thank you. I'll start over then, Chair Bone.
Yeah.
Okay. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 4-0.
We're adjourned.